Really quick before we get started as everyone's coming into the waiting room, would you are coming from the waiting room, would you like me to record on my end?
Uh, I can do it right here.
Okay.
Alright, recording now.
Alright, are we all, are we all set then? We're recording, Justin?
Yes, all set.
Thank you. I will then call to order the City of Ferndale Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, we are coming together at six thirty-one P M. And we will begin with a roll call of commission members from our city clerk.
Commissioner Azar.
In Ferndale.
Thank you. Yes, as a reminder, thank you, Commissioner Azar. As a reminder, uh, if you are remote, which everyone is tonight, please state the city and state that you are sitting in right now. Uh, Commissioner Braga.
Uh, here in Boise, Idaho on a work trip, but otherwise living in Ferndale, Michigan.
Uh, Boise, Idaho is the correct answer. Congratulations. Uh, Commissioner Brazen.
Here Ferndale, Michigan.
Commissioner Foster.
Here Ferndale, Michigan.
Commissioner Hagforce.
Here Ferndale, Ferndale, Michigan.
Commissioner Husky.
Think I would ask you here Ferndale, Michigan.
Councilman Polica.
Here in Ferndale, Michigan.
Commissioner Walter.
Here in Ferndale, Michigan.
And Chair Baker.
Here Ferndale, Michigan. Thank you. Alright, oh, sorry, I goofed up my count. Okay, I've got my full complement of commissioners here this evening. Welcome, everybody. Uh, we will begin with the approval of the agenda. We will do a roll call vote, um, even just for these small items. Um, just because we are virtual, uh, makes it easier for the minutes. So, uh, if there's a motion, I'm sorry, um, city staff, is there any, are there any changes or updates to the agenda tonight?
She wants a watch, too.
I'm sorry, Justin or Aaron, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Sorry about that. No, no adjustments this evening.
Thank you. In that case, I would be looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented, please.
Commissioner Brazen, motion to approve agenda. Foster seconds.
Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Brazen and a second from Commissioner Foster to approve the agenda. We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Braga.
Yes.
Commissioner Brazen.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster. Uh, Commissioner Foster, you're on mute.
Thanks. Uh, yes.
Commissioner Hagforce.
Yes.
Commissioner Husky.
Yes.
Councilman Polica.
Yes.
Commissioner Shawalter.
Yes.
Commissioner Azar.
Yes.
And Chair Baker.
Yes, thank you very much. Our next item is a, a review of our electronic meeting procedures from our city staff.
Thank you, Chair Baker. Uh, for the record, Justin Lyons, planning manager for the city. I'll just briefly go through, um, a quick slide and we can always pull these up during each individual item. But, um, as you're all aware, this is a, a electric, electronic meeting, um, in compliance with the, um, Open Meetings Act, um, and some, um, emergency orders that were, um, provided by the Health Department and State of Michigan. So, um, there are three agenda items this evening. The, uh, potential consideration of the adoption of the Ferndale Moves Mobility Plan recommend, or excuse me, recommendation to city council to adopt the Ferndale Moves Mobility Plan. There's also the public hearing for the three ninety-seven East Breckenridge, um, conditional rezoning, special land use and site plan, as well as a, uh, site plan for eleven twenty east nine mile. As part of, um, the procedures for online meetings, we've been sort of doing this since, um, last March or April or so. Um, and so this general process is how will you, um, open things for public comment, um, for each of those, uh, agenda items, but, um, so the first portion, or excuse me, the first, um, agenda item is the Ferndale Moves Mobility Plan where, uh, people can give feedback. And so generally, if you're using video conferencing, which it looks like most people are, you can use the raise your hand feature or, um, reactions feature. Um, state your name and the city where you reside, where you're, where you're speaking from, um, express your interest when called upon to do so. Um, we'll, we'll kind of moderate through staff on, on calling on folks. Limit, limit your comments to three minutes, please, uh, so that everyone has a chance to speak. Um, there is a chat feature that is live. We're not monitoring that, um, throughout this process, just it, it, it is kind of a lot to keep track of. So please, you know, use these features to, um, raise your hand or reactions to make a comment. If there are folks that did use the phone-in option, um, our clerk will read off the last four digits of the phone numbers that are listed. Um, and unmute callers, uh, please state your name and city where you reside, same, same process. Um, express your interest and then limit those comments to three minutes, um, and hopefully we will be able to answer any questions you have on any of these, uh, particular projects.
Thank you so much, Justin. Yep, when we, when we get to agenda items, um, uh, to each agenda item, we will, um, kind of talk back through that process, um, for, for public comment, but just to make sure that everyone knows how to participate this evening, since we are virtual and not, not in person. Um, and if you would please, uh, mute your microphones, um, when you're not speaking, that would be helpful to cut down on back, background noise. Thank you. Alright, we'll move on to item number four. This is the approval of the minutes from Planning Commission Meeting of February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Does anyone have, um, updates, changes, questions on those minutes? Commissioners? Alright, or a motion to approve?
Commissioner Braga motions to approve.
Husky support.
Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Braga with a second from Commissioner Husky to approve the minutes from the Planning Commission Meeting of February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one as presented. You will have a roll call vote on that, please.
Commissioner Brazen.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Epstein.
Commissioner Hagforce.
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, sorry, lost my place. Commissioner Husky.
Yes.
Councilman Polica.
Yes.
Commissioner Shawalter.
Yes.
Commissioner Azar.
Yes.
Commissioner Braga.
Yes.
And Chair Baker.
Yes, thank you. The motion passes. Alright, our next item is item number five. This is, uh, the call to audience. This is a chance for anyone in the audience to talk with the Planning Commission about anything that's not on the agenda tonight. When we get to each agenda item, there will be a chance, uh, to offer comment and to ask questions, but if there's anyone here, um, uh, who wanted to address the Planning Commission on something not on the agenda, um, just a reminder, on the agenda tonight, we have the Ferndale Moves Mobility Plan. We have a conditional rezoning, special land use and site plan at three nine seven East Breckenridge and a site plan consideration at one one two zero east nine mile. So if there's anyone here to address the Planning Commission on anything other than those three items, this would be your time to do so. If you are using Zoom, um, uh, you will want to use the raise your hand function. That is typically, uh, found in the participants button at the bottom, um, of your screen. Um, you can also use the reactions button, um, and kind of, you know, clap your hands, wave your hands, or frankly, even just wave your hand. And turn on your camera and wave at us and we'll just keep an eye out just in case, um, there's someone whose buttons aren't working. So there's someone here for call to audience. Please let us know. You see a hand? Aaron, is that Mr. I see Steve. I can't see your last name, Steve. I'm sorry. Yep, Aaron, are you able to unmute him? Perfect. Thank you.
It's Steve Potashinsky.
Ah, welcome. Hi, Mr. Potashinsky. You've got three minutes. Please, uh, state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Steve Potashinsky, uh, two one two zero five Oxford in, in, uh, Farmington, Michigan.
Welcome.
Hi. Pleasure to be here.
Thank you. Yep. Was there anything you wanted to address the Planning Commission on tonight that's not on the agenda? You've got three minutes.
Um, I just wanted to wish everybody very safe and happy St. Patrick's Day and that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Yes, have you St. Patrick's Day. Thank you very much. Alrighty. Anyone else for call to audience? Comment on anything not on the agenda? Looking. Aaron, do you see any other hands?
No, I do not see any other hands, nor do I see any, um, oh, we do have two phone-ins right now, but it looks like perhaps they have, um, video available that they're using. But I Galaxy S ten plus and a Galaxy S ten E and as well as an iPhone.
Alright, if any of those callers are here for, um, call to audience, again, comment on anything not on the agenda, um, you can unmute yourselves at this time. Alrighty, we will move on to item number six A. This is the consideration of the Ferndale Moves Mobility Plan. Uh, Planning Commission, uh, is a recommending body. The city council is the final adopting body on this plan. Um, but they would be looking for a recommendation from the Planning Commission. Um, we'll begin with an introduction from our city staff, please.
Thanks, Chair Baker. I will, um, share my screen briefly. So, uh, as, um, Chair Baker stated, um, the city of Ferndale has a, uh, mobility plan, uh, which is called Ferndale Moves, which has been, um, in the community since about two thousand and fourteen. Um, so back in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen-ish, uh, city council adopted a complete streets ordinance, which essentially said, you know, going forward, streets right of way, um, will, uh, are required to be planned for, um, for all ages and abilities. Is sort of the short version of it. Um, and so roads and streets and, and, um, sidewalks, um, parks have been sort of planned in that fashion since that time. Two thousand and fourteen is when the original Ferndale Moves Plan was adopted. That was a direct requirement out of the ordinance, just that's essentially says you need a, a non-motorized plan to kind of guide future mobility and transportation in the community. So, um, that original Ferndale Moves Plan, um, as I said, adopted in two thousand and fourteen and really, um, kind of set the stage over the past, uh, six or seven years. Um, the plan had a specific recommendations, uh, on streets, um, on transit, um, even things like bike share and ride share. And so a lot of the projects in that plan have came to fruition, um, everything from, uh, bike lanes on Libranoy to, um, safer cross, crossings on nine mile, um, to some of the pathways that are in some of the parks and even, uh, mobile go bike share. Um, it's important for communities to have a, uh, adopted, you know, but mobility plan that the community has given feedback on and the council and the Planning Commission review and, um, approve or adopt, uh, because it really does allow for communities to, um, be more eligible for grants. And so that is, that has helped, um, the community get over two million dollars in grants for improvements for non-motorized improvements, what we call, um, so the bike lanes and some transit stops and, um, some of the, um, green stormwater infrastructure that we've been doing in the city lately. So, um, really covers a lot of different transportation aspects, but, um, it's having this plan, um, though takes, you know, time upfront to, to, um, put together, um, really gives a great opportunity to hear what the feedback, um, the feedback from the community is and what folks want in mobility, uh, but also to help us save money as we try and be more efficient when we plan for these projects. So, um, it was time last year to start the update process and so, um, staff has been, uh, working on this particular plan. Tool design group was the consulting group that helped, um, do a lot of the, the work during this and it's obviously pretty tough to update a mobility plan or any plan and, and get community feedback during a pandemic. But, um, I feel like we did get, um, a great deal of, of input and, um, suggestions and recommendations and all those things ended up in this plan. Um, so I won't go through the in, in, entire plan. Um, it wa, it was, um, linked in the packet, but, um, just much like the last Ferndale Moves Plan. The majority of this plan is online, so it's sort of like a living document, um, that lives on Ferndalemoves.com. Um, which is where you can see a host of the projects that have been done recently as well as this plan. And, um, so it really helps us update the plan and use it as our central source for any time there's a road project or a, a new pathway or something like that being installed. So, um, I'll just go through the highlights of this and just talk about some of the goals and some of the, um, feedback that we got, um, and received from the community, uh, as well as, um, you know, we reached a lot of our adjacent communities and partners as well. So, um, I'll go through just the highlights, but, but this is the actual plan. So, um, there are some appendices that are separated out and anyone who, um, you know, doesn't, doesn't want to go through the website, uh, these are things that we have available that can be picked up at city hall and people can review. There's, um, some documents that go with this for the key projects, but, um, this is the online version of the plan. So, um, we, um, city council, um, and the community in general, I think, was asking, you know, how can we plan for the future mobility in Ferndale? This plan is generally, um, will cover the next five years of projects, but also, um, looks a little bit beyond that, too, to, to think a little bit bigger and think a little bit outside of Ferndale as a region as well. So the plan's divided in, um, six, um, different areas and introduction. The plan looked at, you know, um, what has been done to date and what is the environment in Ferndale today. Um, talks about who's involved in the community and some of the, and a lot of the feedback that we received. Talking about Ferndale, how multimodal it is and what that means and that really, you know, to me means that we're thinking about, um, you know, multiple ways for people to move in and out of Ferndale rather than only just single occupancy vehicles. Um, we talk about implementation in the plan and then there are some specific priority projects, um, that we receive probably the most feedback on that are really, I think, um, our priorities going forward. So, um, as I said, the plan's divided into, um, four overarching goals that were put together, um, by a steering committee, but also affirmed through a lot of different community meetings and, and then feedback that we received. So, um, goal number one, um, environment, the community or city council strategic plan talks a lot about, um, climate change and combating, um, you know, that issue going forward. And so decreasing emissions by prioritizing and investing in energy efficient transportation options has really been a priority of this, this project. So you'll see with each goal, there's some key actions, um, that we'll get into, um, as we go through. Community life was second goal. So connecting, um, Ferndale to some important destinations, uh, making sure the network is safe. There's comfortable streets that make daily travel enjoyable for community life. Um, so that led to some recommendations that focus on schools, parks, making sure people can actually get to, um, assets and, um, needs within the city. So, um, you know, I think, uh, in planning, um, I think I've heard more over the past five years about fifteen minute and twenty minute cities where you can, you know, kind of get all of your needs satisfied from going to the grocery store to going to a park, um, to, um, going out to restaurants. All having those things within fifteen minutes, uh, of a walking, you're biking or transit trip is very, um, desirable. Um, and so Ferndale kind of is built that way with our grid, but, um, we've actually done all the, as a commuter, as a city, um, taken some key actions. And so some of those upcoming key actions, uh, would be to continue to invest in sidewalks and bike lanes. Uh, we talk about tread, traffic calming in the plan, um, as well as establishing a safe routes to schools program, um, with our partners, uh, in the Ferndale Schools. Equity was very much a key goal of this plan. So, um, prioritizing high quality, non-automobile transportation options, um, for people that are underrepresented historically in transportation planning, not just in Ferndale, but anywhere, including people of color, low income people and people with, uh, disabilities. So this was, I think, something this, the steering committee really focused on, um, and, and prioritized throughout the plan. And, um, our partners' tool design that helped put together the plan really focused on this throughout the entire plan. And so, um, it's really a commitment to equity, um, through transportation, public spaces, making sure that everyone, uh, is equal and feels like they belong in Ferndale. So, uh, there are some recommendations related to robust public engagement, um, which we're excited about to, you know, kind of build upon what we've done in the past and, and improve. But also making sure that we engage our neighbors because we know that people that walk, um, to work maybe from Oak Park to Ferndale or ride their bike from Ferndale, um, over to Hazel Park. We know that, you know, it really, people when they're walking and biking like that don't necessarily pay attention to borders. They just want to know how they can get to and from work or to and from home. So, um, making sure we work with our neighbors has always been important and I think we, uh, expand what we've done in the past in this plan. So you'll see key actions in the plan such as an ADA transition plan, making sure our community engagement is actually robust and talks to everyone and goes to where people are. Uh, building equity and making sure that's a part of actually how we consider projects and prioritizing projects rather than just, um, whatever's the easiest project to do next. And then, uh, ensuring that there is, um, elimination of disparities in traffic safety enforcement, which I think our police department's already kind of been working on. Um, the other key goal, regional mobility, I've talked about regional, um, cooperation and partnerships a lot. So we're, this plan continues endeavors to continue to promote and improve public transit, high quality biking connections to economic centers throughout the region. So as I said, we, I've obviously shared borders with a number of municipalities. Woodward Avenue goes right through our community and is a major trunk line, but also a major transit line. So making sure that, uh, we're thinking about, uh, traffic signals for pedestrians across eight mile to get to and from Detroit. Uh, making sure that we're still advocating for public transit improvements, um, especially on eight mile, nine mile, uh, in Woodward. Uh, as well as closing a gap, we've heard over and over about, um, a bike lane gap on nine mile road between Woodward and Pine Crest. How can we, um, make that safer for folks and also improve pedestrian, the pedestrian experience at the same time? I won't go through all the history, but, um, we did do, um, quite a bit of, of, of research into what is Ferndale today, just to know what we're working with. And so, um, there's a lot of conversation in here about some of the recent studies that have been done, including recent studies on Woodward Avenue, um, the Ferndale Master Plan, um, our Complete Streets Ordinance. And so the steering committee, uh, early on in this process create or participated in a mobility audit, um, where they walked streets and, and took a look and s, you know, tried to see what that experience would be, for, uh, someone walking, someone in a wheelchair, someone taking transit. And, um, so all these streets were evaluated, um, saw a number of different things between gaps and sidewalk, sidewalk, um, to transit stops that could be improved. So I think, you know, sometimes that is the best way, um, really is just getting out there and, 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 and walking and experiencing it and, and thinking about someone, how am I catch a bus on Woodward or something like that? So folks saw a number of, you know, right away is limited in Ferndale as an, uh, an older community, uh, that's been kind of built out in a number of ways. And so, um, narrow sidewalks and, um, you know, sidewalk cafes that, um, kind of limit areas where people walking or in a wheelchair can get through or pushing a stroller. Those were all things that were top of mind as part of today. Talked about traffic volumes and the safety issues that go along with that. Um, this is a sort of a prime example of, of, of someone who doesn't feel safe, uh, riding their bike on Woodward with traffic speeds and traffic volumes. And so those people are pushed to the sidewalk, which ends up making, um, a shared space difficult and there's a lot of obstacles in our, in the right of way, as I mentioned. Bus stops, as I said, aren't always the most comfortable, aren't really shielded from weather. Where can we improve those things? So, um, a lot of existing conditions were analyzed from the bike level of stress, um, which I thought was pretty powerful here to assess really where our bike network as a community is right now. With one to four scale and four being, um, obviously the, the fast higher volume wide streets that very few people riding a bike are comfortable with. Um, but I think almost more important really was the pedestrian level of traffic stress. Um, this really, uh, there was a web map that was published and, uh, surveys that were done that people called out specifically on a map. This is where I feel very uncomfortable and, um, also we use some of the data that, um, comes from, you know, the speed limits that are in the community and traffic volumes and where historical crashes have been. And so it really, I think illuminated and just showed, uh, that, that we have made Ferndale walkable, there are some gaps that we really need to improve going forward. Uh, we looked at potential walking trips, um, a lot of those areas I don't think would surprise you. Um, you know, there are just more people likely to walk, uh, in the downtown core, but there's also some other areas where, um, you know, near schools and near some of our commercial districts, uh, like Libranoy where, um, there is a high potential for people to walk in the future because there is a number of, assets and places to visit in those corridors. As I mentioned, we did a pretty robust, I think, um, community engagement. Um, there was sort of a number of things we did. We sent a postcard early on to make residents aware of the project, um, a lot of online outreach, uh, frankly, because of, um, the pandemic and, but we did get, I think, a lot of different, opinions and feedback on things to, uh, up, update or, um, look at going forward. So, um, the online map was published a couple of different times throughout the process, I think, three times actually. Um, and so a hundred and seventy people participated, gave over two hundred and sixty, um, comments. We also held a pretty major public meeting December ninth, um, eighty-two participants participated, asked questions. We did breakout rooms, we did polls. Probably one of the more fun, I think, public meetings I've ever been part of. And so, um, if there's anyone who joined us for that, thank you for participating in that. Um, and we also held, uh, probably four to five other community meetings after that specifically focused on Woodward because we talked a lot about Woodward in that meeting and then, really needed more time. And so we, we, we held a few more meetings after that. Uh, that meeting is, um, recorded and available on the Ferndale Moves website as all, as a lot of this information. We also knew that because of the pandemic, um, you know, we couldn't reach everyone, um, online and we wanted to make sure that we are, um, trying to cast a wide net with the community. So there were individual, um, interviews that were done, um, with the Ferndale Accessibility and Inclusion Commission, um, and got a lot of great feedback from, from that group. And I, I guess also I would say I would plug, um, the Ferndale Accessibility and Inclusion Commission, um, they are doing a lot of great things in the community. And so I, I would encourage anyone who is interested to, to join those meetings, um, they meet monthly as well and their information and agendas on the city council, um, website. Also spoke to the Ferndale Housing Commission, um, some regional advocates like the Greenways Coalition, um, Smart Bus, obviously, and then Transit Riders Union or Transportation Riders United, I should say, um, is another advocate group that we spoke to and they discussed a lot about the needs, uh, of their members and people they advocate for, um, for transit in Ferndale. Regional conversations included everything from, um, with the city of Troy, talking about Libranoy and things that we did, um, to improve, uh, biking and walking on Libranoy, but also the things that the city of Detroit just completed, um, on, uh, south of eight mile. Um, and then we did an analysis and, and spoke to other communities and saw what were in their regional master plans, or excuse me, master plans to see how our projects align. And so, you know, these are conversations and communities we talked to as staff, uh, quite often, um, but it's nice to see that we have alignment through, um, specific adopted plans as well. Section four just mostly talks about all of the recommendations, um, that came through all that community input, um, and interviews. So, uh, there's twenty-four policies and programs that you'll see in the appendix that, um, you can go through that we're recommending as part of our, um, plan, as well as eighty infrastructure projects and crossing upgrades. So there, there's a long list I won't go through, but, um, there really is a, a lot to look forward to, I think. Whether you're walking, rolling, taking transit, um, and even just small things like policies where we recommend, uh, wider minimum sidewalk widths to kind of avoid this particular issue here, um, with the sidewalk cafe. There's a lot of examples in the master plan of, uh, different ways that we can approach traffic calming. Some, uh, we do have a traffic calming program in the city where, uh, we essentially try to improve pedestrian crossings, um, but also install speed humps and other ways to slow down vehicles that may be speeding on streets. And so you'll see that some other examples in here that the city has not done yet that we're interested in and, um, and then continuing to update signal timing. Um, that's particularly something on Woodward we've talked a lot about. And then other improvements, like I said, working with SMART to improve transit. So there's a lot of different examples in here that obviously I'm not going to go through all of it, but, um, you know, things where we can partner with this, the Ferndale Schools on, um, Safe Routes to School as a program that, um, we think is important. Looking at curbside management, how we handle, um, pickups and drop-offs in the downtown. And so a lot of those policies and And so a lot of those policies and and specific projects are in this implementation section that. We're focusing on in the first five years. And a lot of those projects were all prioritized based on. Feasibility and the goals I mentioned earlier, as well as things that really rose to the top in the web map and the other feedback we got. Section six did pick three priority projects. One of them we've talked about quite a bit lately with Woodward Avenue. If you're not aware, the city cities of Ferndale and Pleasant Ridge just did apply for a grant. For a potential road diet on Woodward, converting one lane on each side of Woodward. For. That would be. A two-way bike lane, but also. Extending pedestrian crossings and. I should say shortening pedestrian crossings by eight to ten feet on each side. So there's more details on the Woodward Moves. Portion of Ferndalemoves.com that you may want to check out, but it is highlighted here as a priority project in the plan. So we're continuing to work on that. Hilton Road is a is another corridor where we received a lot of feedback in the plan. We do know that probably in twenty-four or twenty twenty-five, a portion of that road between River Heights and Nine Mile will be. Resurfaced. And so that is a time where, you know, we may want to prioritize and look at. Modifying the bike lanes there, making some better pedestrian crossings, calming traffic where possible. So, you know, these priority projects in the plan, they are kind of at a high level, you know, something like Hilton Road when if that project were to move forward. In twenty-four, twenty-five, there would be community engagement that would be happen in advance of that. That's more specific and tailored to all of the people that are in that corridor and around there. So I don't want to. Get anyone too excited like this is a happening for sure, but this is sort of a high level recommendation that will. Look at once we get closer to planning, but we do think that generally that recommendation right now. Is a little bit safer for everyone there. And then third priority project is Slow Zones, which is very, very much basically. Our traffic calming program in the city right now, but providing more options. And so. More details on that if people have questions, but essentially we have created a tool toolbox to educate folks on how neighborhood traffic calming could be. Installed on their street or in their corner of Ferndale. And so right now that is through a petition process. And so we're kind of evaluating what is the next step of that process? How much of that will be a petition? How much will come from city recommendations? And so. This section of the plan really just talks about ideas of where things could be implemented. We already do curb extensions in Ferndale. To sort of slow traffic, but also shorten the distance for pedestrians to cross. And so that. That'll continue, but there are some other new things in here that we may want to consider as a community. So. Wrapping things up, the bottom portion of this plan is where you can click on specific links for these completed projects. It reiterates the plan goals and, you know, we are really looking for feedback on this portion of the plan. So we've been. Promoting a this this plan on Facebook and some other places, but. Really hoping to get feedback. There is a feedback form that was in this agenda item and I'm happy to. Share it as well, but you know, really trying to get as much feedback as possible. The next steps for this plan. Would be for the commission to consider recommending adoption tonight and in April, I believe it's the. April twelfth meeting, city council will tentatively consider. Hopefully adopting the plan and this will be our sort of mobility guide for the next five years or so.
Thanks, Justin. You and your team have put so much time and and energy and effort into this and and I know. You know, how much this this is a passion of yours in particular. So thank you for walking us through that. And at this time, I want to see if there is anyone in the audience who has a question or a comment. It's not a formal public hearing, but we run public comment pretty similarly for for all items. So. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to offer a comment or ask a question. On the Ferndale Moves Mobility Plan that Justin just walked us through, you're welcome to do so at this time. I would ask that you. Either use the raise your hand feature in your your Zoom box. Take a look at your participants button at the bottom and. Raise your hand should be there. Or. You know, flag us down somehow, raise your hand physically, turn on your on your video and and flag us down and Erin will. Will help me take a look and see if there's anyone who would. Like to ask a question or offer feedback on this. You're welcome to. You'd have three minutes.
Great. Yeah. So the first hand was from Alan.
Hey, thanks, Erin. My name is Alan Hale. I'm the Chair of the Ferndale Accessibility and Inclusion Advisory Commission. Thanks for the call out, Justin. I know we had a lot of fun helping on this project. The the one maybe nuance or thing to add is I know it calls for an ADA transition plan. And I think we we definitely fully support that. The additional line I would add is if we could. Add something around inclusive and barrier free design as well. I think one of the big education points our commission stresses is that ADA is really the minimum. So seeing design elements there where we intentionally create barrier free environments instead of just ensuring at least one barrier is removed. Would be a great principle to take into this.
Thank you, Alan.
All right. The next person is Mike.
Welcome, Mike.
Good evening. So I have a couple of questions. First of all, I want to thank the city for.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mike, would you state your name and address for the record?
Mike Flores from Woodington Street.
Thank you.
So first, thanks to the city for and really Justin and his team for. Really engaging the community and and getting some feedback. So I do have some questions on what was on. The packet to the planning commission. One is, you know, one of the part of the struggles that I have with a lot of these. Plans and suggestions and things that that get that come to to commissions and then goes up to city councils that there's really no estimate on how much these projects are going to cost us. Like there's never an estimate. So I I I wonder if there's like anything that can be shared. Around that. So we have an idea of what these, what the scope may be for some of these projects. And then number two. Is in regards to prioritizing the projects. Am I understanding correctly that the projects have not been prioritized as of today and that that's the next step? Because I'm as somebody who lives on Woodington, I'm really concerned about the Ferndale Foods parking lot. I've made no secret about how dangerous I think that parking lot is, especially as it intersects with with Woodington. And with the potential of the Ferndale House Two. Which I have clearly identified that as a barrier for that project if the Ferndale Foods parking lot is an address first for our communities. So if we can, if someone can share thoughts around that, we'd really appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike. We'll continue taking questions and comments from the audience and then we'll we'll work through all the questions, so. Rather than going back and forth, we'll keep going.
I do not see any additional hands raised at this time. Nor do I see any call in numbers.
I'm taking a look to through my screen here. All right, Justin, question. Thank you, Erin. Question from Alan on barrier free versus. Versus ADA. Compliance and that's certainly something we we talk about. In terms of site circulation and other things on site plans that planning commission, can you talk a little bit about that? And how that can be integrated?
Just at a high level, I guess I I would like to, you know, share that with our. Partners tool design that helped put together the plan, but I think, you know, that sounds like a worthwhile. Policy recommendation that we can put in the plan. And then I think, you know, one of the next steps for for us would be. You know, working on that with the Accessibility and Inclusion Commission. Because I think, you know, that'd be about that would be valuable. And I think probably that commission probably knows more about it than me for sure. So I would. You know, I think that'd be a worthwhile next step.
I think it would be helpful for master planning as well as we think about. Sort of planning for all ages and all abilities in the future in Ferndale. I know that that came up in our last master plan. I'm sure it'll come back around in the next year or two. When we do our next master planning. So. Alan, if you're still on, we will want to talk with you when we do master planning too for the same reasons. And then question from. Question on, well, first let's take the cost estimate question from Mike Flores. How does that process work in the city, Justin?
Yeah, so I mean, there, just like with the last plan, there's sort of a high level. Cost estimate that would be done after, you know, this plan. I would say that it's really more worthwhile to. Go through each project, you know, the immediate ones as they come up and go through those. Just because the costs I feel like do change very much from year to year depending on other road projects that are going on. But if but at a high level, you know, I think. That's something that we can work on to put in the in the in the adopted plan with this. But I think I would say. Most of those costs really do change by the time you go to plan them. And so then it's worthwhile. For example, last, I think it was last year. West Marshall was a project that was. Part of the plan designed and then by the time it was bid, we did have to remove things because the all the bids came back high for certain elements. And so those items had to be. Removed or adjusted. So. You know, there's like the high level planning costs upfront and then there are the more actual like project construction costs that that come later. That we usually tackle on a project per project basis, but I I I understand what you're saying.
Thank you. The the question as well about prioritization. Are the projects, you know, there were a couple of documents attached to the. To the commission agenda that talks about how things would be prioritized. Is are they currently prioritized? And if not, when would that happen?
They are prioritized in the in this plan. And so that that's part of the appendices at the bot- very bottom of the plan. So I think it's definitely worthwhile for any anybody really to go through that and and see if you agree with the prioritization. Some of it does have, some of it is based on just the city's. Road bond projects that are already like, you know, the next few years. So some of those are kind of higher up at the time, but you'll see there is a. Guide to how we prioritize for this specific plan.
Is that sort of that numerical system that's in those charts? Is that the prioritization?
Yes.
If there are more detailed questions on that before the council meeting, what's the best way to to dig into that?
Yeah, so there is a seamless document that where people can upload questions that is kind of where we're trying to collect things and I'll put that in the chat as well. But um but also just reach out to Erin or myself or email C E D at Ferndale M I dot gov. But I know, Mike, you have my email, so happy to, you know, chat about that.
The numerical system didn't entirely make sense to me. So that's. Others had questions, so.
And then I think one question about the Ferndale Foods parking lot, and that is that is on the project prioritization list with the. There should be a big star on it because it is private property. So there are sort of the limited things that the city can do. Without partnering with Ferndale Foods, but of course we would like to partner with Ferndale Foods and and sort of figure out a solution there because it. Yeah, I totally agree absolutely. And it was noted quite a bit on the the web map, I would say. And so the feedback we got of. You know, this doesn't really work for anyone right now, so.
Thanks, Justin. Let us take questions and comments from the commission at this time.
Commissioner Braga here.
Oh, Commissioner Braga and then Commissioners are.
So first I wanted to congratulate the planning staff on this really excellent plan and all the recommendations. It's yeah, great consolidation of. City's vision and really tangible ways forward to make the city safer, more convenient. More desirable for walking, cycling and moving around, whether it's on a wheelchair and a scooter, on a bus. Yeah, in in essentially any way, like and even safer and for people when they're driving or in a car as a passenger. And on that point, I think one thing that the. The plan documents as well as what was in the planning commission packet tonight. Does generally a really good job of avoiding words like pedestrian, driver, cyclist and focusing on like. The moment when somebody is walking or when people or people who habitually. Take transit or cycle. And I wonder whether the city should make a. An effort to really move beyond the words pedestrian, driver and cyclist altogether. Because those are really imprecise terms. They're not the most useful like policymaking tools because they collapse. An identity that happens at a specific moment in time between like people's bodies and machines and other people's bodies and machines. And almost makes it sound like a constituency. So instead of saying that we want to make crossing safer for pedestrians at a certain point, pedestrians don't exist. It's it's not a constituency. It's like a person's, yeah, person in a moment in time. Why not make walking safer, more comfortable, more convenient at this intersection? Instead of like pedestrian crossings, crosswalks. So I I think that would help. Make the plan even more inclusive than it already is and really universalize the idea of mobility and transportation.
Thanks, Commissioner Braga. Commissioners are.
Oh, I just wanted to also say I I. Give a lot of weight to this plan that it was well thought out and tried to involve people as much as it could during the pandemic, but. I I just see a lot of possibilities coming out of this and and it's, I just wanted to get support for it.
Thanks, Commissioners are. Other Commissioners have feedback at this time?
Sheriff Baker, if I may.
Commissioner Hagforce?
Thank you. So the higher up concepts of the plan I think are are really strong, the four goals and. What the kind of move forward in future planning. I think I think that part of the project, I think they did a very good job with. Establishing a foundation that we're from. One of the things I kind of took a little concern with is. Under the priority projects, it almost felt like some of the priority projects were. Based on one or two comments that may have come across, but not actually evaluated and assessed to see if it's. Worthwhile or something that's going to be okay for the downtown. So like, for example, looking at. Crosswalk improvements or addition or adding crosswalks. I think we can all agree that there was a huge gap between Camborn and Pleasant Ridge where there's no crosswalk available. So the idea of adding crosswalk at like. Dragan or Maplehurst makes sense because there's not a crosswalk present. But in the document, it talks about possibly adding crosswalks every single block from Camborn to Albany, which. Even though they're signalized, in essence, you could have someone crossing at every crosswalk. And we're already reducing a lane on Woodward, which is going to create a traffic nightmare. And I don't know if it's been fully assessed on what I'm doing something like that, not only the cost. But what does it do to the overall flow of downtown? And while we of course don't want to become a cut through city like we are right now without Woodward as a freeway. We also don't want to deter people from even coming in the Ferndale because there is a benefit on people driving through the city. Someone who may not necessarily be familiar, but say, hey, there's a new restaurant. Let me stop there. Let me come back here for a weekend. We do need that traffic coming through. So it's concerning that there's that many crosswalk additions in the plan. And I'm not comfortable at this point. Showing support for something that then leaves it wide open to just picking and choosing and possibly choosing every single crosswalk in there. So I would almost ask before there is a support of this plan to go through. And looking at some of those priority projects a little bit deeper and saying, is this feasible? Is this good for the city? Before then presenting it to city council and giving them a game plan, saying this is what we're doing in the future. So that's my, that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Hagforce. Justin, did you want to follow up on? That one at the time?
Sure, at a high at a high level, sure. And so I appreciate the feedback and also the compliment on the the overall goals. Yeah, I mean, the the priority projects. I would say, of course, they're not, they're not all going to happen. I mean, I would say even in this near term Woodward plan. Right now, M Dot won't let the city add any new crosswalks, which is really unfortunate. The number of crosswalks that were recommended, that was part of the previous plan and also just part of the. Two thousand eighteen bicycling and safety audit. And a lot of that was to get, I think, M Dot's attention of, you know, we would like to see, I don't know, just one. One crosswalk anywhere as part of the plan. And I, you know, just knowing the. Expense of adding one crosswalk, I know that we would never never be able to add all of those. Crossings. So I think that I would take that, you know, that type of recommendation is one of the more high level recommendations. I wouldn't take that as. Being a specific, we're definitely going to implement all those crosswalks immediately. So if that if that's confusing, that's something I would certainly want to go back and look at and 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 look at the prioritization of that. I feel pretty good about everything else, but it but yeah, it is. Um I feel pretty good about everything else, but it but yeah, it is. There there are pieces, just like sort of, just like the land use plan, the master land use plan, uh there are some more high-level things. That just kind of come with those, you know, bigger planning documents that are more aspirational. I would say that's probably one of the more aspirational things in the in the uh uh um plan and and the plan, so. So I'm happy to, you know, look more at that section of the plan. But yeah, I don't I don't think we'll be adding all those crosswalks uh in my lifetime for certain.
Well, that the A crosswalk is aspirational or are all of them? I just want to make sure I understand. Crosswalk would be.
Sure, all of them. I I would encourage uh anyone interested in adding a cross, eh just one crosswalk on Woodward to. Uh reach out to their local M dot representative and help us push for at least one, particularly between Pleasant Ridge and downtown Ferndale.
If I may follow up on that, Chair Baker.
Please, yeah.
One, one of the kind of suggestions I can make is, and again. For me, as a transportation planner, seeing all these priority project crosswalks was a huge like red flag because it looked like it was overwhelming. And I think even though I know we are being realistic and knowing that that's not necessarily going to play out. Um if we're trying to have a discussion with M dot and trying to suggest the addition of just one crosswalk. There would def- definitely be some concern on saying, okay, we'll we'll allow you to have one crosswalk, even though you have a laundry list of a million others you want. So that's again where I think that the plan before being implemented. Um or 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 um approved, I think we do need to go through and edit that. And make it a little more concise, because I, like I said, I think there was a a strong argument for something like Drain or Maplehurst to have a crosswalk. You have a long distance, um you have a lot of population on both sides of the street, you have destinations on both sides of streets. So something like that, you can have a discussion with M dot about. But having a potential crosswalk proposed for each and every block. There would definitely be some concerns on, okay, if we give them an inch, are they going to ask for a foot? And while M dot's not always open-minded to crosswalks, we can look at the Grashit corridor where Clinton Township was able to add, I believe. Three automated crosswalks along Grashit uh avenues. So there there's a potential for that, but I think if we are overwhelming in the plan and. Almost unrealistic and like we just acknowledge that we're kind of a little unrealistic. I think then it's unrealistic to think that M dot's going to be open-minded to do anything with us. Um so it's about editing and being more concise and really focusing on what do we really want to accomplish and only presenting that. As opposed to a laundry list of wishes that will never come true.
And I and I think to the chair, if I could just add, I guess I would say that the five-year project priority list, that's the, that is the real. Priority focus. I would say that um the longer list, I mean, you'll see there's a number like for Eight Mile as well. There's a number of pedestrian crossings there where, you know, when the time comes to look at those specific projects, that's where. Things would be whittled down based on feedback, community feedback and what's realistic and budget. Um so, you know, I I think that. I'm pretty comfortable with the way it's shown, and even if we were to pick. Yeah, would would this goes to council to pick certain specific ones on Woodward and certain specific ones on uh crosswalks on. Eight Mile, I think is what I was saying. I think that's okay, but I think that the five-year project list is really where the the priority is, but I but I under- I understand the need to. Narrow the list.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the commission at this time? Or emotion? Oh, I'm sorry, before there's a motion. Oh, Commissioner Foster, what did I just see? Where am I? Sorry.
We've got a bunch of us at once, sorry.
Uh sorry, I saw Commissioner Foster and and Commissioner Braga. Was there, was that for comment or emotion? Sorry, I just realized I had one. Quick question before. Okay, Commissioner Braga.
Okay, um so through the chair, but que- question to Commissioner Hagforce. I'm curious, um in terms of your concerns about like traffic volume of Woodward and Ferndale. I'm thinking, for instance, of Woodward in downtown Detroit, where granted, the street is narrower there, and I honestly don't know what the traffic volumes are in comparison. Um but my impression is that there Woodward has a lot of really frequent crosswalks. And um maybe it is a difference in volume or signal timing, but driving through Woodward, kind of through midtown Detroit. Doesn't feel like too nightmarish. Um so I I'm just curious where your concerns are coming from. And thank you for offering those those comments too.
Yeah, no problem. So um actually, it's funny that you said I I just drove up that part of Woodward the other day and realized how big of a nightmare it was. And why I've never driven down that section um and just done the freeway, because I literally hit every single light. Um and that's not even assuming that there was pedestrians crossing, because there wasn't by every light. Um and 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 I know we've had this discussion a lot about, we know that Woodward feels like a freeway between through Ferndale. And we want to make that more inviting, especially more welcoming to other modes, like we had this discussion earlier. Um but we don't want to go from one extreme to another. Um we already know that we'll probably lose a lot of cut-through traffic with the addition of the seventy-five lane, which again, is not always a bad thing. Um again, people may just be passing through Ferndale, going to the destination outside, and it's not a big deal. But we don't want to deter all pass-through traffic as it could be detrimental to businesses as well. Um so it's kind of like, you know, let's start slow and then ramp up. We could get there one day possibly, but. We're already talking about lane reduction on Woodward. Uh we already have some goals again about, you know, improving a a a crosswalk ability farther north. But doing it every single block, and especially because the crosswalks that are proposed are automated. So it's not even like it's a timed signalized light necessarily. It could be just someone walks up, presses the button, and the light changes even though traffic is coming. Um so it's a lot of additional analysis that's needed. And again, if we are talking about making a recommendation for this project, I think that the project has a very good foundation. And a lot of good ideas by stilling there's some editing and filtering that needs to be done before we're recommending as a body. And saying, hey, this is great, and state council approve and let's go with it. So those are my concerns with it.
Thanks, Commissioner Hackforce. Um I had a question, Justin, on there's a couple of references to Ralston Street, which I know is kind of like the south. Complement to Fair Street, I believe. Um and so Ralston is. Um of particular interest because it's near the multimodal station, it's near the new Amazon warehouse. Could we note that that's not in Ferndale, though?
We can, um absolutely. We and and so it's it's meant to be. As a partnership, so we've been talking with the city of Detroit, uh they and and um D dot as well and trying to. Get an understanding of what Amazon's doing there, so hopefully we can uh include that crosswalk, as you mentioned. Uh unfortunately, there's a bit of much they can share, but yeah, we can um just specifically note.
Or, you know, fair slash Ralston Street or however, you know, the best way to note it. Thank you. Commissioner Foster?
Um yeah, Commissioner Foster moves the planning commission to recommend that the city council adopt the Ferndale Moves Mobility Plan. With the condition that the city staff review the language regarding uh Ralston Street to. Read Ralston Street Detroit or some equivalent. To for city staff to review language to adopt um universal mobility language as recommended by. Um and the city staff also um review language. And to potentially remove the terms pedestrian, cyclist and driver as recommended by Commissioner Braga.
Thank you. That was a motion by Commissioner Foster with a second by Commissioner Hosky. Is there a discussion on this motion? There were just a couple of of items, Commissioner Hagforce, that you talked about. Are they? Um do you think that that um? They're modifiable at this time, or would you want us to? Um have this come back to the commission? I just want to make sure that I understand where you're standing in this.
Uh personally, I would like it to come back to the commission after the ads have been made. Um I I know Justin uh said, you know, they're obviously going to be looking at a lot of stuff and. It may not necessarily be implemented or whatnot, but I would prefer it not to be filled with a bunch of stuff. And be very concise on projects that are actually attainable and beneficial to the downtown.
Thanks. I just wanted to make sure I understood your point of view as our resident transportation planner. That's important to me.
Understandable.
All right, any other discussion on the motion at this time?
Through the chair, Commissioner Braga.
Yes.
Maybe we can add a line that um addresses that aspect of. Uh kind of the flexibility in the priority projects or the city. Like acknowledging that the city will still have to go through like financial studies and like feasibility about which priority projects to implement. Kind of a, maybe try to address that.
Yeah, it sounds like Justin was going to make a few clarifications or updates to that priority project page.
Yeah, I think I I think we'll we'll um get with our our team and reevaluate that. And I think also. Um you know, we, I think we could easily um tier those crosswalks on Woodward as well. Um and, you know, include that in the recommendation, because I think as Commissioner Hagforce mentioned, there's certainly ones that lend themselves much more. I mean, I know for certain Woodward Heights was one that the Pleasant Ridge community um or city of Pleasant Ridge was looking at too. So um you know, perhaps that's um one that we look at, but I think. It's pretty easy for us to at least make a high-level prioritization of um those crosswalks. Before it goes to council and happy to report back to the commission as well.
Um Justin, you mentioned taking it to the April twelfth council meeting. Is there a reason that it needs to go on April twelfth? Like, is there a a grant application that seems to be appended to or?
Um it it definitely helps for grants that we're applying for. Um I think it's primarily just knowing the council agenda's coming up. And um we'll be ramping up the ma- the master land use plan probably in May, so mostly just trying to. Not have overlap.
If it came back to the commission on April seventh, would it still be able to go to council on the twelfth, or would you miss that meeting then?
Uh we would likely miss that meeting. Um you know, through the chair, if I could suggest. If we were able, if the commission uh does approve this uh recommendation motion. I'd prefer to um still just come back and report on it, maybe not in a voting motion. But still report here the changes that we had heard from the commission. And that way we can still be on the April twelfth agenda, but. Uh of course, I am open to uh however the commission votes this evening.
Thank you. So we could expect an update on April seventh? If there's a and a vote to approve tonight, there could be an an update on April seventh as well.
Absolutely, and I.
Not additional action necessarily, but an update.
Absolutely, and I hope that um I don't, I think I forgot to say, you know, we're trying to um hopefully get all of the feedback from the community by. March thirty-first as well, so um hopefully there will be other things that we can say, hey. Uh planning commission, we heard from the community, and here's a few other things that we're um sharing as well.
Okay, yeah, I I just I give a lot of weight to to Dustin's um to Commissioner Hagforce's. Um comments and recommendations about how to best position things um for success um with M dot. So. Yeah, that I guess that's where my questions came from, um just knowing his his expertise. All right, any other discussion on this motion?
Chair Baker, a question. Um if we do. If if we do go for recommendation of this, and then Justin does come back on the seventh and gives us an update. If there are still concerns that we have about the plan at that time. Do we have the ability to almost repeal the recommendation prior to the state council meeting? Or once we recommend it today, it's pretty much stuck and then it goes to state council?
I'm sure, sure, I I am, I am sure that city council um would probably not adopt it if the commission said that. Yeah, we have, we would like to repeal our approval motion, so.
Are we actually able to do that, though? Like, is are we, is this kind of like a binding? Are we able to repeal that? That's mainly my concern.
Uh you you could repeal it and make another motion. I I would never want to go to council with this type of plan and say that the planning commission wanted. To repeal a motion, so I think, you know, we would. We would not, we would probably cancel that April twelfth meeting and, you know, go back to the drawing board, I guess.
All right, any other discussion on the motion? And Commissioner Hosky, we've got quorum without you, so if you need to step away, just let us know uh when you're exiting and and re-entering.
Chair Baker, I'm sorry, uh I don't believe there was a second on the motion. I did hear Commissioner Foster make the motion.
Oh, that's that's actually a good point. Um Commissioner Foster needed and Commissioner Hosky seconded.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Before she left.
Yep, and I was going to say, and then Commissioner Hosky was just about to step away, so um Brittany, if you've got one second, we can do our vote. Because I just realized you were the seconder. Sorry about that.
Awesome. I was, I wanted to confirm before stepping away.
Thank you. All right, if there's no additional discussion, we'll have a roll call vote on this, please.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Hagforce.
Epstein.
Commissioner Hosky.
Yes.
Councilman Pollock.
Yes.
Commissioner Shawalter.
Yes.
Commissioner Azar.
Yes.
Commissioner Braga.
Yes.
Commissioner Brazen.
Yes.
And Chair Baker.
Yes, thank you. The motion passes. All right, thank you, Commissioner Hosky. Just let us know when you get back.
And I should have also said through the chair, um thank you very much, Commissioners are for participating and the steering committee for the planning. Uh or excuse me, for the Ferndale Moves Plan. Uh definitely put in a lot of lunchtime steering committee meetings and reviews of plans and walking audits. So um thank you very much and also all the other feedback from the commission, so.
Thank you, yeah, and the um. You know, uh the the comments from Commissioner Hagforce, you know, when we see this update on the seventh. You know, I I think if there's, at least for me, if there's if there's still big concerns on his part. I would. I would potentially want this to not go to council yet, you know, so we've we've. We've just voted to approve and send it, but if we had to, you know, send comments or something, so I just really want to make sure we can. You can, we, not me, sorry, the city staff. Um you know, I know you're still collecting input. And that uh you're confident you can address a few of these things that were in the condition, but also that we heard from Commissioner Hagforce.
Understood, and um you know, eh from Commissioner Hagforce and anyone else, uh you know, absolutely reach out to us if there's other things that you see. Um you know, there's a couple of areas where we're swapping out pictures and stuff like that still at this point, so, you know, please give us feedback. We, you know, it's it's the community's plan, it's not necessarily my plan, you know, um so I'm, you know, looking forward to. Um presenting this to council and and before that, giving the commission uh the updates and hopefully that will. Um everybody will will support, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Justin, really quick to um just to reiterate as well is that um we would like to have community feedback by the thirtieth. Um we have a seamless doc that's available to solicit some of that feedback, just to make it easier on our end um for collecting data. But please feel free to um send us emails, give us a call. We're taking all forms of feedback so that we can integrate it and make updates.
Aaron, what's a seamless doc and where do people find that?
I apologize for that. Yes, it's like lingo on our end. Basically, it's just a form that you sign up on. Um it's kind of like a survey form, um and that way it's an electronic digital form that you can access. On the Ferndale Moves website. It looks like during this meeting, somebody already utilized it, which is really good. Um so it is located on the Ferndale Moves when you go to review the plan.
Thank you very much. All right, we will move to item number seven.
Actually, real quick, um this is. I know with that we do have, uh I know that we do have an option to uh. There's a bunch of community feedback that may be implemented. If that does change any of the items within the. Ferndale Moves Plan, can you please notify us during the uh the the meeting that's happening on the seventh? So we can make sure that there are items that are are added that we agree with?
Absolutely. It'll be a, you know, agenda item just like this, um with details on what the changes were, so hopefully that are easy for everyone to see.
Thank you. Alrighty, item number seven. Uh this is a public hearing this evening. This is consideration for approval of conditional rezoning, special land use and site plan of three nine seven East Breckenridge. So we will begin uh with an introduction from our city staff. Uh then the applicant will share their information about the project, and then I will open up the public hearing. Um at that time, you know, similar to the way that we did on the Ferndale Moves Mobility Plan, uh we'll take public comments and questions. We'll get everyone's comments and questions in, and then we'll work to to address them. Um it's just more efficient than going back and forth um after each question. But first, uh we will start with an introduction from our city staff. And then some information from the applicant before we open the public hearing. So I believe this one's Aaron.
Um Aaron. Um, Erin Quatell, uh, pronoun she and her, and I'm a sustainability planner for the city. And um, okay, so we are talking about a property at three ninety seven East Breckenridge. Um, the uh Levine Group is requesting a site plan approval for a proposed six unit multifamily. Um, residential townhome development. The applicant wishes to conditionally rezone from the current R two zoning, single and two family residential to R three, single multifamily. Um, residential due to the density requested. Um, so the current zoning is R two um with six units um that would not fit within R two, which is why they're requesting the R three. Rezone, conditional rezoning. Furthermore, the townhome um design also requires a special land use as required in R three residential if it is conditionally rezoned. Um, the north side of East Breckenridge is zoned R two, the south side of East Breckenridge is zoned R three. Um, the proposal consists of two buildings with green space between the two buildings. Parking access with garages off the alley to the rear of the property, as well as two front facing garages off East Breckenridge. Um, this has been in front of planning commission twice as discussion, once in November and then once in December. Um, the discussion at that point revolved around design and density, some of the trade offs to the parking design, as well as some um. You know, site plan considerations and so the force. I will like to note that there was an error on um the staff report that the applicant had pointed out with. Um, for me, there are twelve parking spaces that are provided and not ten parking spaces. I thought that I had edited that everywhere and I missed it in a few spots, so it is twelve parking spaces. Um, they do comply with all the other parking requirements such as um EV charging stations um in all of the parking areas. As well as appropriate bike parking. Um, the composition of units consists of four two bedroom townhomes and two one bedroom townhomes. And I'm trying to see if there's anything else of note I would like to add to that. Um, I think that the the lighting, the landscaping and architectural compatibility comply with the ordinance. The design and building materials appear to meet the majority of the standards. And um the consideration for the um front facing garages was something that we had um discussed previously. So the planning commission may want to consider the compatibility with that as part of our, as listed in our ordinance. Um, and I think that that is all um for my update at this time. So I know that the applicant also had a presentation that they had sent to me um on Monday. So uh if the applicant would like me to pull it up, I'm happy to do that and then they can provide a little bit more context of the project.
All right, we will welcome our applicants this evening.
Good evening. Um, we, if we can have control of the screen, we can do the presentation from my side.
Okay, so do you like me to? Um, is it the Michael at MGA that I should give permissions to?
Yeah, yes, please.
All right, hold on one second, I'm gonna make you the co-host and then you should be able to have the ability to share your screen.
Very good. Good evening, Commissioners and Ferndale Residents. My name is Bruce Levine, I am the president of the Levine Group. Here with me tonight are my two sons, Alec and Shane. The Levine Group is a second generation real estate development, property management and building company. Uh, Alec and Shane would now extend that to three generations, hopefully. Our proposed residence furthers the master plan's goal by providing a greater mix. And diversity and the type of housing available in the community. Including more dense residential development, close to downtown in the form of townhouses. These townhomes also further the master plan's goal. By serving as a physical transition between the traditional residential neighborhoods. The neighboring R three zoning and the downtown area. While keeping compatible with the existing single and existing multifamily homes on the block. To encourage the continuance of the diverse mixture of residential options. The our townhomes would be supported by public alley, which is intended to maximize the use for. Vehicular site access, circulation and service to maintain a compatible. Walking environment, walkable environment. Additionally, it has an irrigated lush landscaping, craftsman style architecture. And compatible es- aesthetics such as front facing porches. And the use of high quality building materials such as brick and cement siding. Which will maintain the appearance for years to come. The property improvements create an up to date, two code, energy efficient, useful and habitable. Dwelling for residents in the community to live in. Next slide, please. Our proposal consists of, like what Erin said, two buildings. The front building, as she already stated, will have two four bedroom units. The rear building will be basically a four car garage with two single bedroom units above it. Which will be occupied by Alec and Shane, who will also be the onsite property managers. We spent a Saturday afternoon walking in the neighborhood and talking to the homeowners. It was a delight to meet them and listen to them. The main question that came up was, is there going to be parking in the street? What is it going to look like? And is it gonna be as tall as what's going on one block over? Well, we are providing, as Erin said, twelve onsite parking, none in the street. The majority of which will be off the alley. We do not require any street parking. While we are asking for a conditional rezoning from R two to R three. We are not exceeding the height requirements as allowed in R two. And we will not be as tall as that other development one block over. Some key features, as Erin already mentioned, thank you, are the six EV chargers, one in each garage. Also in each garage will be plenty of room for bikes, uh, trash cans. Recycling bins, and of course a car. In addition, there will be two outdoor bike racks for four bicycles. And the AC units will be screened by landscaping, which will, and they will also be located between the two buildings. Out of sight and to minimize the sound to the adjoining neighbors. Next slide, please, Evan. Here's the front building. Next slide, please. Here is a view of the garage rear building. I'm I'm available now for any questions, or Michael, the architect, might want to add some comments or answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm Mike Gordon, the architect. Uh, with me is Evan from my staff. Uh, we've worked with the Levine Group for a number of years. And we feel that their uh commitment to the community is genuine and. We've worked really hard to come up with a product that we're all proud of. And that we can uh look to as an example of this kind of uh transitional housing in the area. We think the project fits within the community's standards. Um, a couple of things have happened. We did have, there was some question about the trees on the property. We did have an arborist. On site between the time we submitted the package and now, the one tree was declared poor and the other one was declared good. Although it, uh, as an English walnut, it is not a desirable tree. Because as he refers to it, there's a lot of fruit litter and other plants that are incompatible to grow with it. So we think that um the replacement trees, and if we have to come up with money for the tree fund, we will do so. Um, there was also some concern about the heights of the buildings. Um, we lowered those heights and we said we are compatible with the district. The access from the alley um affords, um, I think the ability to service the buildings. Um, both from a functional and fire safety standpoint. Um, we think that this is a very uh good neighbor for the neighbors and I think um. You 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 had submitted the form with.
Oh, right.
Right.
We, when we went through the neighbors and talked, then we, we asked. The neighbors that they would sign our petition in support of our, our development, and we did receive. Quite a few, I think it was fourteen or fifteen people gladly signed.
So I think it's um an excellent example of reaching out to the neighborhood and introducing themselves and introducing the project. So, um, we're happy to answer any questions and we look forward to uh moving forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, at this time, um. If you guys would, if the applicant would take the, would stop sharing your screen, it just makes it a little easier to do public comment. Because I'm able to see people, thank you, that's very helpful. Alrighty, so there are two public hearings, a lot of the um. A lot of the type, a lot of the things that are covered in a conditional rezoning are also relevant to a special land use. Um, so people can comment on anything. I'm not gonna try and separate these public hearings. So I will, um, at this time, I will open the public hearing. Um, oh, I'm sorry, for consideration of a conditional rezoning. Um, and a special land use at three nine seven East Breckenridge. Uh, if there's anyone here this evening to speak at that public hearing. Apparently, my dog wants to speak at the public hearing, I'm really sorry. A little embarrassing, um, uh, if anyone is uh here to speak at the public hearing uh for three nine seven East Breckenridge. Uh, this would be the time to either raise your hand using the Zoom. Um, or we'll, we'll go through and call on the people who are here on phone, uh, to make sure we get their comments as well. Um, you'll have three minutes for your comments. Please state your name um and your address for the record when you start your comments. Public hearing will be opened at seven fifty two PM. And Erin will help us monitor um people as they raise their hand.
Letting people think about it if they want to participate, because I don't see any hand raised, hands raised yet. Um, I do not see any call ins either. Oh, we do have one, okay, it looks like Al.
Welcome, Al. I don't see Al.
One second, it looks like maybe, let me try to unmute you if you can't unmute yourself. Um, let's see.
Oh, I see you. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we see you, welcome.
Good evening. And uh, to start out with, my name is uh Alex Malaschinsky. And I am the landowner at three eighty five East Breckenridge. And my current location is Jensen Beach, Florida. Um, for the um, for three ninety seven East Breckenridge. Um, I do not believe that this is compatible with the neighborhood. I'm. I believe it's too big of a unit and it should not be zoned R three. Granted, there are, they are saying that there's parking for twelve in that uh, that unit. Is that going to be interior parking or is that going to be exterior parking? Are they going to be able to park between the driveway and the sidewalk? Or should I say that the face of the garage and the sidewalk? My other concerns are uh the alley in the back. Um, will that be paved or is it going to stay um half gravel, half mud? Because of, the the only reason I ask about the the alleyway is because of the apartment complex that is to the east of. The house as we speak, um, all of those occupants of that apartment complex are. Parking on the side street or on Breckenridge themselves and parking also in the alleyway. Um, of course, that's unpaved and has not been, that should have been paved, but that's neither here nor there. So, um, I also have some, some questions for the builders, is that possible?
Absolutely, yep, you can go through your questions and comments. Um, we'll take all the comments and then we'll get them responded.
I'll try to make this as quick as possible, get tried to do so within the, the three minutes that we have. Uh, I I have a question of my lot distance uh between my house and the proposed building that's gonna be there. If they've also looked at that, um, really not sure back in uh nineteen fourteen or nineteen thirteen. When this house was built, um, on the east side of the house, it's probably. Twelve, maybe sixteen inches between the sides of the house and the fence itself. So I'm wondering about issues of. Not really the walk through or pass through, but code, code areas of. Overhangs on their proposed house, um, being so close to my house. Um, at one time when I had to put a uh, uh, a garage, uh, excuse me, a roof on the house. I was um, um, advised by the uh, the code uh inspector. That uh I had to cut off the, a foot of my overhang, so it did not hang over in the neighbor's yard. So that was one of it and um. I'm not, um, I believe that is primarily about it. Uh, the parking, the lot distance. Is most of it's just because of the night parking around there, it's just, it's full as it is, as you very well know, the. The street itself is, is, has very few driveways. So that is my biggest concern. I believe that you'll find that a lot of the neighbors have the same concern. And uh, that seems to be about it, other than I could say, state articles and stuff like that. But um, no, I I I would like to keep it as a, a smaller residence.
Thanks, Al.
I thank you.
The next hand we have is from Mike Flores.
Welcome, Mike. Oh, there you are.
Uh, yep, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Um, but it's not just good evening. Again, my name is Augusto Mike Flores on Wellington Street. I want to share one of the pulses from the community. The community feels frustrated. What seemed like a normal zoning protocols and updates a decade ago are being questioned today as projects are being realized. What seemed like beautiful plans a few years ago have nega- negatively impacted the quality of life of many of our neighbors. What seems like a unique evolution of Ferndale is being viewed as royal loaking of our city. What seems like a request by the city, by city officials to do a PDCA to determine if it fits or doesn't fit. Our, our, our neighborhoods in our city, we are considering moving forward with conditional zoning. Um, without thoroughly understanding the new baseline for our community. Based on the two previous planning commission meetings where this project was discussed, I continue to have a concern. Why? Why are we deviating from the master plan in the current zoning? Why not wait until the updated master plan is reviewed and updated? To see if the Ferndale community wants to continue to expand the three, the R three zoning beyond its current boundaries. I believe this is also a concern identified by a firmer planning commissioner. At the December sixteen meeting that wasn't adequately answered by anyone on the commission. Based on this concern, I urge the planning commission to pause and vote no on this project as an R three project. This will allow our community to have time to participate in Ferndale's master plan. And determine the best way to move our community forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike.
I do not see any other hands at this time.
I see some of the other hand, uh, Linda Ross, Michael Linda Ross.
Oh, yeah.
It's flagging us, yep. Welcome, Michael. Are you able to unmute yourself?
Hi.
Perfect, yes, sir. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Mike Lenardo's. I'm the property owner at three, four, five, three, four, seven East Breckenridge. Uh, I've been a resident and property owner for. Uh, I've been a resident and property owner for, I don't know, over ten years. Um, my concerns uh kind of mirror what has already been stated. I just learned of this project and um I'm seeing what's going on on Nine Mile or East Buster. My concern is um, not only parking, but aesthetics of the neighborhood. Uh, this project, the pictures I just saw, it looks like it's three stories. I believe what's on Buster is three stories as well. Um, just the size of the lot and six apartments. I don't know how many of garages. Uh, I'm not really familiar with the project other than what I've heard and being put on notice of this hearing. My concern is that it's um, it's just, it's a, it's, it's my, my concern is, is it's maybe too big for the the property that they're trying to put it in. Um, I'm all for development. I think it would be great for the neighborhood. I just don't wanna see something that is gonna be um, not in fitting with the surrounding neighborhood. Um, and and I I know they they mentioned the the development on uh, on um uh, streets south of us, uh, Vester. Uh, but it it does appear that theirs is three stories as well, so and it does appear as Vester is three stories, so I'm not sure if they're making each floor lower, but but again, my concern is similar to those that have already been voiced and my major concern is aesthetics and size of the development and the existing surroundings. Um, then I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Let me, thank you, uh, Chair Baker for pointing the other one out. Um, I do not see any other hands raised at this time if um, as a reminder, you can use a reactions. Um, if you go to the participants, you can, um, depending on what Zoom you have, you can raise your hand that way. You can flag a sound with the video. Um, and I don't see anyone who has called in.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna give it just another moment. Um, we will start uh breaking through answers to these comments, but if there was anyone who was having, you know, a technical difficulty or something, uh, please still, still raise your hand. But to the uh, to the applicant, would you clarify for us? Uh, we had a couple of questions about number of units and uh, number of parking spaces? Would you clarify for us, you know, how many are those two-car garages? You know, is all of the parking inside of the garages or are you counting spaces in the driveways? Can you kind of clarify that for us, please?
Sure. Uh, there are six single-car garages, one for each unit. The four garages are accessed from the alley. The two are accessed from the street side. And there will be uh permissible parking in the driveways, much like anyone's driveway. Um, if these were two single-family homes side by side. And in the back, the the paving in the alley is an issue which is only can be addressed by the city. Um, you know, they request, we don't have control over how the alley is maintained. We will work with the city on maintaining as much as we can, but it is a public alleyway. Um, second, the property is currently zoned, the building in the front meets, i- if the building in the back was there, the building in the top could be built as is because it meets all the code restrictions for the current zoning. The additional zoning allows the two extra units to the rear. We are compatible with the height of the current zoning. We, you know, we didn't go to the R three zoning, which would allow something higher. So we were very cognizant of working within the zoning. So the building as designed for the front actually is compatible with the current zone. The back building is somewhat lower because it's only got the partial third floor. Cause we're trying to be sensitive to the scale and architecture, but again, it also meets the the zoning height of the current zoning, not the future zone. And I think that and the five-foot separation from the property line is adequate. I mean, that's the sort of known quantity for access to a building through both fire rescue. So having five feet between the property line and the structure, um, that's uh deemed adequate by the uh fire department. His only concern was the access from the alley when we were discussing with him. Uh, but you know, we showed that the the ladder to the windowsill of the second floor is pretty close to achieving um, anything that he he has a smaller vehicle than would have to access the alley because of the nature of the alley. So we think we've addressed all those concerns from the life safety issues. And we think the architecture does complement the area. And like I said, it the current underzoning would allow for you
Thank you. Could you, could you clarify again for your neighbor at three eight five? Um, you talked about the five-foot setback. Is that from the edge of your of your eaves, your overhangs?
No, it's the foundations of the property line.
So you're
Uh, they're allowed so much projection into the setback for overhead. And we're compatible with that.
So your, your, but your overhangs are all still on your property?
Correct.
Thank you. All right, um, I will, I'll have the city take the question um about alley paving, please. Um, this does contemplate parking coming in and out of the alley. It also uh, we had comments from the fire department about alley access um and some responsibilities they would wanna see put on this building owner in terms of snow removal so that they can have adequate alley access. Those weren't in the conditions uh related to the site plan or the rezoning. Um, so I just wanted, have you guys talked to us a little bit about alley access? Oh, I'm sorry, that's for Erin.
Yeah, so I will, I'll be able to tr- try to answer this and then I'll probably push over to Justin if he can pop in and help me out too. Um, so we have a lot of public alleys uh throughout the city of Ferndale and um in the past, we did review um, our capabilities for the city to repave throughout the city. And um at the time, it wasn't feasible. Um, I know that within our um current master land use plan, it talks about maintaining those um alleyways so that they can be connectors and throughout our community. Um, I know that that's something that will certainly come up through our next master land use planning process. And um certainly, we've had a lot of conversations in front of planning commission about other projects throughout the city um in relation to the alleyways as well. Um, so that's what I can say about that. There's no um necessary uh like maintenance plans per se by the city at this time. Um, but like I said, I know that that's kind of an ongoing conversation for us. Um, so I, there, I think there was another question within that. Um, maybe it was about fire access or fire concerns. Is that what you were? Okay. Yeah, there were um a few items in there that um talked about making sure that there were um X-box and access and everything like that. And the applicant did provide um some dimensions to the fire marshal talking about access and ability to reach upper level units above the garage and so forth. Um, and um certainly, you know, all of those code compliance would need to go through for the final site plan review and building plans. Um, which would have a further review by everybody on staff as well. Um, but from preliminary review, it looks like the um the fire concerns were addressed at this point in time. Um, Justin, do you have anything else that you can maybe add about the alleyways?
No, I'd say that's all accurate. Um, it was a recommendation in the master plan, as Erin said, to, for the city to evaluate. Um, you know, what alleys could be maintained. And so I'd say at a high level, um, it, the cost is pretty exorbitant to maintain all the public alleys in the city. So I think right now D B W's approach has been, you know, um, taking calls for the alleys that really do need um some media fixes. Uh, but I don't think a major plan of paving is is in the near term. So I would say that's one item that we have on our list as well from the last master plan to say, you know, A, give the commission a status of that and 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 B, you know, does that continue in the next plan or is there a different type of recommendation related to alleys? But we do know they're an asset, uh, but it is a a complicated asset.
Thank you, Erin. Thanks, Justin. Um, so I just realized I I didn't close public hearing. Sorry. Um, but that gives me a chance to say, um, if there were any final comments um or follow-up uh from the public real quick. I know this is um sometimes a a challenging format, so I just wanna make sure everyone was able to get a a question or a comment in if they had one.
Yeah, we do actually have one hand raised, um, just for
Thank you.
Um, so if that individual would like to unmute themselves.
Yes, hello. Thank you. Uh, my name is Lula Colios and I'm the homeowner at three seven nine east Breckenridge here in Ferndale, and I pretty much have the same concerns as my neighbors um, as far as paving the alleyway, as far as ample parking. If these people are gonna be parking on the street like we are forced to park on the street, we don't have a driveway. We've resorted to permit parking so that we have access to our home. Um, and it's just difficult seeing such a large structure being put in this space. It seems like it's just not compatible for the neighborhood. And pretty much I share the same concerns as my other neighbors.
Thank you, Lula. All right, um, we did talk about parking a bit, that there are six um uh, garages uh on the site and then six additional parking spaces on the site. So they're not asking for for a parking waiver or expecting that they would be using on-street parking, which which some developments do. Um, they they ask us to waive their onsite parking requirement. Um, so this does not do that. They've they've planned to have twelve parking spaces on their site. Just to address that, that question. Um, I also wanted to see, Erin, did we have question? Oh, have we got a follow-up? I see Michael raising his hand. Yep. I see you. Yep.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I I just wanted to to go back and ask the city a question, cause I didn't realize it. So if I understand correctly, you're gonna put, they would like to put six garages up for two apartment apartments and two one apartment apartments on this piece of property. Has anyone from the city gone out there and and looked at the size of the lot from from a standpoint of what the other um neighbors have voiced as concerns to maybe alleviate that? Or I I didn't realize, I mean, on 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 one of those lots, I don't know how you fit two parking spots, uh, let alone six garages or four garages. It just, it it seems um Yeah, I I just, it it's hard to envision. So I would ask the city if they have done any due diligence on that end.
Thank you. Um, yep, Erin, would you talk a little bit about our site plan review process?
Yeah, so applicants provide a full site plan that has to be sealed um by either an engineer or architect and a professional. And what we do is um it's submitted at least three weeks, three to four weeks prior to a planning commission meeting, and we go through the entire review process. We have our um full staff review it, which includes engineering, our building department, police and fire. Um, we have different parameters that we for our site plan review, um, which includes um, lot coverage and density and um setback requirements, proximity to other buildings or structure, um, access, um, that sort of thing. So it goes through the review process um that we do for all that we receive at the city.
Thanks, Erin. All right, and was there any other public comment received, Erin? Um, I believe you had an email in advance of the meeting?
I did, yeah. So I had um an email in advance of the meeting, um, discussing um the uh rezoning and how um this individual didn't think that the rezoning was appropriate. A common term that we kind of hear is like a spot rezoning since it would be a conditional rezoning in a only R three conditional rezoning in this um area in particular. And I did receive other phone calls, um, voicemails. Most of them were just um questioning what was um happening, um, what type of the questions about the development, questions about access, similar to what we've heard today. And then um I believe I did hear from the daughter of the folks who live at three eighty-five um, east Breckenridge as well. And I spoke to her in length and um gave her all the information for the for the meeting and everything to pass along to her parents. Um, and I think that's all the feedback that I personally received. I don't know if Justin received any further comment aside from that.
I did not receive anything. Thank you.
Alrighty, then I will remember to close the public hearing at eight fourteen. I'll see clerk would have reminded me. Um, because I wanna move on to questions and comments from the planning commission. Um, questions for our city staff or um for the applicants at this time, please?
Through the chair.
That is Councilman Polika.
Yep, um, uh, this is to, I I think Justin. And this is a question of clarity, because you know me, sometimes I need to have things put in the most simplest of terms. So I keep hearing height of the building isn't the question because the current um, zone would allow for a building this, the site, the same height on this property. Can we go beyond that? I- i- if 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 the developers wanted to, could they build this exact same project but only have two families live on the property?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer that to Erin. Um, I will, I will say that you don't need extra ex- explanation though, councilman, call it polica, but.
Yeah, so the, as far as um height restrictions, um, they are proposing a similar height that's permitted in the current um zoning. What triggers the conditional rezoning is is literally the amount of units. So they're six units, it's the density concern. Um, and then like earlier, the special land use is because of the town.
So, so just for clarity, this developer could come to council. Actually, they wouldn't even come to council. They could come to city hall and say, we wanna build this project and only two families are gonna live on this property. And they wouldn't be sitting here today asking for um a rezoning.
Correct.
Okay, so we're not dealing with the size of the home. We're really dealing with the number of units on the property.
Correct.
Okay, that, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Um, councilman, could you, so when you were saying two families, um, so my understanding was that um, under current zoning, you can have up to four units.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought it was single or two families. So you could have four units. They want six units. So really, the only the only request is the the developer saying, we'd like to have six residents live on this property, not four residents, and the building it be allowed today in the current ordinance for zoning.
You faded out just a little bit, councilman. The building what would be? Was it building height would be allowed today? Is that what you said?
Well, the whole, the whole building itself. I mean, the the, how they're using the property, how they wanna use the property could be done today if they said only four families were gonna live on the property.
Erin, is that accurate?
Yeah, and I, Justin, I think that you and I discussed that it was three family that it, or three units that's permitted based on the density um of units per acre.
Thanks, that's what I wanna clarify.
Okay.
Like, could that, could that front building be built as proposed without the back building? That's kind of my
So there's a, there's a few things going on. So in the R two district, you can build fifteen units per acre and and Erin can remind me um the acreage of this particular site. Um, and then in R
Or something like that.
And the R three district permits thirty-five units per acre. Um, so there's, there's that difference um there. So yeah, I essentially, uh, the other thing I think to keep in mind too is just um in the ordinance, there's different definitions for dwelling types. So um two-family or duplexes, those are permitted in R two and R three. And so then, you know, the number of units is dependent upon that acreage I mentioned earlier, the density per acre. And then town home type units are special land use. Um, and so that was part of this additionally on top of the rezoning is part of this requirement.
And similarly, um, residential apartments above a garage accessory to a single family is a special land use. If that's kind, could, because that second building would kind of trigger that type of um requirement.
Understand that, but given today's zoning on that property, if the developers wanted to build everything that they're requesting, they could build it today for just three families.
With the caveat that it would probably still have to, it would still probably trigger the um special land use because of the townhome.
Because it's, because it's defined as a townhome and not a a duplex.
Correct.
Okay.
Because it would be a single-family attached dwellings.
Okay, I I just wanna get the clarity, cause I I know that a lot of people are concerned about the size of the house and, you know, they're they're I I think there's a misconception that, you know, this is all based on the size of the building and it's not. It's based on the density use of the building.
I have a quick uh
I have a quick uh comment there. Yes, sorry, Commissioner Shawalter. Um, a quick comment based on uh section twenty-four dash forty-three. It says that the R two is o- only allows you to have a thirty-five percent building lot coverage. And so what they're building is covering more land than that would typically be allowed in R two. So I don't think that that statement is quite accurate.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Uh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, Commissioner Foster, then Commissioner Braga, thank you.
Thank you too. Um, just um another clarification on that. So in terms of the actual height and the site back requirements, they are meeting those. It's more so the density and the massing of the building. So if we're talking about size, I mean, there's a couple ways, different ways to talk about it, right? So in terms of the height and the width perhaps, that was, that is within the confines of the R two district. It's more so the massing of the building that um if you're talking about size enassing, that it would be different between the R two and R three. If that helps.
Thanks, uh, Commissioner Foster, Commissioner Braga.
And to build on that comment, I think it's important to uh recognize that the applicants are proposing two structures on the parcel. So uh, like specifically, it seems that the front, like, street-facing structure would be allowed um by, right, except for the townhouse, special land use permission. So it it's really it it seems to me that the question then it uh kind of echoing Councilman Polika is less about the front building and more so about the presence of the rear one.
Yeah, the height, a couple people talked about about height, um, you know, feeling like it was too big for the for the property. Um you know, it does, it is um not as tall as um some other things that we've reviewed around our downtown that were in R three districts. Um, it is um, it does fit within the current, you know, height limits. But thinking about the uh, sort of the the use of the space um and putting those apartments over the garages and back, I think is is a really smart use of the space. Um, you've you've got your parking on site and then you're, you know, sort of accommodating you know, a- additional residential above that as opposed to just building a bigger building. Um but I just want to make sure we're really clear on what could the lot coverage as proposed exceeds what would currently be allowed. Um, so could one four-unit townhome building be built here? Or would it need to be two duplexes? Could someone clarify that based on current R two zoning? Justin or Erin?
I will look right now.
I'm, yeah, I'm looking right now too. That's like a very um particular um.
I just, I I want to think about one building versus two. And are we, are we literally talking about, you know, you you know, something that would look very similar from the street um and feel very similar to the neighbors is permitted in in R two and would mean more green space on the site, but it would also mean, you know, potentially garages that are just shorter and not used as well.
So, single-family attached dwellings, three or more is permitted in R two, R three, R four. However, it's considered a special land use. So it would still be a special land use, but it wouldn't impact um the the conditional rezoning. So I know that there's like two separate things that we're looking with um at that respect. Um, similarly, when I mentioned that the um apartments above garages, residential apartments, one above garage, an accessory to a single-family dwelling, that's a special land use. So that would be where I I would still think that that would be a special land use. Um so it's not saying that it's not permitted, it just has additional considerations and has to be, have to appear in front of planning commission for review.
Okay, so to, oh, Justin, I'm sorry.
And then if I could chime in too, since the lot is point one eight acres, um, at the R two, R two only allows you Sorry, I just had it. Uh, one, uh, fifteen units per acre. So you could basically have three total units plus a um unit above the garage. That's one thing I've, you know, I think is a little unclear about the zoning ordinance that goes back a long time is, you know, does that unit above the garage, if you were to propose that, does that count as the total units um on-site? Or could you have, you know, the three, let's say, townhomes up front? And then um an additional unit above the garage on the back, something that is on our list for the master plan, I would say. But uh, but anyway. You know, so you are, you are limited uh based on the units per acre uh in R two, something much lower.
And and this is Commissioner Shawalter again. Am I misunderstanding the maximum lot coverage from twenty-four dash uh forty-three? Because it says in R two, it's only allowed thirty-five percent of your property is allowed to be covered with a building in R three. And it looks like the front building would cover more without taking out a scale and measuring it. That looks like the front building is covering roughly fifty percent of the site. Unless I'm, I could be incorrect. I don't, I I I I don't, I haven't actually measured it, but.
So um through the chair, in R two, the lot coverage is thirty-five percent. In R three, it's seventy percent.
Yes, but I I I think we're trying to um take a look at this from the architectural compatibility of the R two neighborhood and see if this would look out of place and the adjacent R two parcels. And looking at that and like just removing R three from the discussion, seeing if they could just build that front house in R two, I think you'd still be cutting it really close with a thirty-five percent. So I don't know if we can even, if we could say that that would be allowed.
To the chair.
Got it. Yep, Commissioner Braga.
So um looking uh page thirty-three of our uh meeting packet, it looks like the proposed lot coverage is forty-three point five percent. So I, I guess I I'd be curious. I don't know if maybe the architect on the applicant team has the number of, like, what the lot coverage is independently for each of the two structures. Yeah, so like have more detail on that. And also, question to the planning staff about the units per acre. So if I multiply fifteen units per acre times the point two, point one eight acres, I get two point seven. Is it uh city practice roundup?
Correct.
Okay, cool.
Correct.
I like that. I haven't seen that in a lot of cities, but.
Thanks, Commissioner Braga. Um, to the applicant, um, if you, if you have the information and are able to share um about the the lot coverage or the the differential between the two buildings? And you guys are cur- currently muted, so if you're talking, I can't hear you to the applicant.
Yeah, hi, we're, we're we're trying to get the number for you right now.
Oh, okay, thank you. Thank you. Yep, take your time. Um, yeah, I I think this conversation, what I'm trying to get to with this conversation is to clarify for for the neighbors who, you know, you know, who see, who see a different, very different than what's there. Um, and it's different um you know, than just doing another single-family home. Um, but but in terms of height um and and how wide the building is, um, I'm just trying to get to some better information and clarification of you know, what might someone be able to build there now? Um, you know, so that it's not it's, it's um, it maybe what's proposed isn't so different than what's um permitted there now, when it, you know, when it comes to height. But there are some, some key important differences. You know, with the rest of the, the size of the proposal and then the number of units.
Through the chair, if I can also add another perspective on that. So I live in an R one zone district, so single-unit detached houses throughout. When I stand in my backyard, I see lots of garages meant for cars, but often used as like sheds or storages or storage units. And the impression is that there's almost like a second, like, parallel street in the backyard. Like, if those structures were filled like by people living there, I mean, they would be small, but I've lived in a three hundred and five square foot studio and like for that stage in life is totally fine and perfect. Like, uh that built environment already exists in Ferndale, so um I have other kind of hesitations about the proposal, but from the building form side of things, I um, I think I'm, I'm feeling fairly convinced so far. And if I can shift the conversation or like broaden it beyond like the physical built form, but from a land use law question of like spot zoning uh that we got an email, a comment from. So having a single parcel being zoned different than its surroundings isn't necessarily illegal. For instance, the city of Syracuse, New York recently did a rezoning and with the intent of, I I think, protecting um some structures on a few streets, you kind of get a bit of a checkerboard pattern. What concerns me is that we, I think ought to be clear that by granting this conditional um rezoning, that we'd have to treat other parcels that approach uh the planning commission under similar conditions similarly. So other R two parcels with a future land use designation of urban residential and, yeah, which would like cover a few other R two parcels near downtown as well as on Woodward, Woodward Heights on northeast side of the city. So I think we should be clear about um that if we're granting this treatment to this parcel that we need, yeah, need to offer that same opportunity for other parcels in similar situation.
If I may add uh or comment to uh
That Councilman Polika?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
I agree, uh, Commissioner Braga, you, what it's doing is setting precedence and and having.
Councilman Polika, we've lost you. Uh, we lost your audio there.
Oh, I don't know when you, when I mentioning that uh it, what he's referencing is is um, which, you know, is always important to me, um, having spent uh six years on the the Ferndale. Thank you.
So I'm gonna try to guess uh what that was, because we lost about half of you, um, and that you're saying that setting a precedent is very important to you, having spent as many years as you have on the zoning board. Is that a correct inference?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Now I'm gonna check why my audio's not working right.
Thank you. Well, it's good we've worked together for a little while. Um, I want to see if the, if the applicant um has anything to to share on lot coverage. I know they're, they were working on getting some information. So I guess um to the applicant, you guys can just unmute yourselves when you're ready.
Uh, it's less than thirty percent. The total footprint of the four-unit front building is less than thirty percent. So it's well below the thirty-five. That, so the front building could be built within that those constraints.
That's helpful. Thank you. Okay, as a, as a three-unit. But that, the sort of the way that it faces the street, um, the the width and and the height um are less than thirty percent of lot coverage. Okay, thank you. Um, and then who, I'm sorry, was it Justin?
Oh, uh, through the chair, I was just gonna reiterate to uh further hit home on on Commissioner Braga's point. Uh, that's why those, you know, no matter what uh decision the commission makes on this item or even the next, the next item really, um, those findings of fact are very important. Um and and it, as as Councilman Polika noted from the BZA, but um as well here, just, we we put those draft findings of fact in the staff reports, but you know, that's, it's very important uh to distribute or distinguish this project from others and showing why it's um, you know, those are the reasons for the rezoning or the special land use.
Thank you. Other questions and comments from the commission uh for our staff or applicants? I see Commissioner Azar and then Commissioner Foster.
Um, hi, actually, uh, would you like to go first? Michelle.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Um, I want to bring up something a little bit different and aesthetic about the character of building. Um, and in this
Okay, sorry, I guess I was on the same line as them, or the previous comments.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. Um, so Commissioner Foster, um, I just, I, I think to staying the same thread, but offer, I guess, a little bit different color in terms of lot size and zoning. Um, and maybe master land use plan and maybe some um maybe color and context to perhaps why um we're stepping down from R three to R two. I mean, it said, I believe in the master plan. Um, and I believe this is what the intention was to really kind of step back some of this higher density from the downtown and you'd have zones with um more intense development spreading into the R one. Um, it's also stated in the master plan that um you know, I think that this R two is um future land use planned similarly to the R three, that it's urban residential. What the urban residential says that the new development should be compatible with the existing um family homes and encourage your contin- continuance. Um so I just want to get part of that. I think that um, you know, the site might be a bit unique in that it's a sixty-foot lot, which um, there are many others in the area that might be, you know, thirty-three or four or smaller, et cetera. Um, but I want to, so you know, there might be some uniqueness to the site, although there are additional sites um to the east of this site particularly is another sixty-foot lot. There's others in the R two district. As I would say that, that's not necessarily the driver for maybe the intention of the R two or R three difference. It was more so in terms of the um the proximity to the downtown. So just want to add some of that context and color in terms of the master planning and some of the reasonings for how the zoning kind of ended up as it did.
Thanks, Commissioner Foster. Commissioner Azar.
Um, okay, yes, thank you. Um, I was um going to um raise a discussion about the aesthetics and um the the garage doors on the front of the uh building. So um, i- in this staff letter, it says that we should, should look at um uh one section which says that the the garages should have approximate distance from the street or facade to um the regular neighborhood. But um the question to staff is, should we also be considering um section twenty-four, one eighty-three accessory buildings and where it talks about that garage being part of the main structure. And then it also speaks to, you know, how big a percentage of that is, because I think that was part of the other discussion. And, you know, because I, I, other discussion, I don't have those elevations in mind, but I think we talked about um that being a consideration is, is we didn't want a big front garage door. Um, that, you know, I think the fifty percent of to- total linear building footage in in this section. Um, I think that's what they were striving for, but I really don't find that that's met with um example. Uh, which in my mind makes it fit less with the neighborhood if it were to, you know, come in as a townhome or something like that. Um, I think if you did the math, you know, outside edge to outside edge, maybe it's fifty percent, but I think the way it's really designed, the most prominent, largest form of the building forward is garage door. Um, I don't think the examples that they gave. Though some of those buildings are nearby and s- and they're, you know, well-built and maintained, it's not the look that we wanted to promote. Um, I I remember specifically, I think, the ones on Buster. Um, just that was new to Ferndale where it had that front door is a garage door and you had to kind of look to where to get in. So I think that was really something to consider. Um, putting limits on on having that garage door and how big of a front facade it should be. So I think for what they're designed, um, it's, it's done tastefully. I understand that they're separated. Um, they've got columns, nice materials. But it still is a front door entrance and my mind seems a lot out of character. So um, I guess that's two questions, one on the character and is it something we could truly consider that is fifty percent, considering that you have to go pretty far back to see the rest of the building? Those are my thoughts and it'd be interesting comments on that.
Thanks, Krista. I think I would direct that to our, our city staff first in terms of the fifty percent um question and the the interaction of the two pieces of the ordinance.
Yeah, so the, and I would invite the applicant to talk about the frontage calculation because based on the conversations that we had, uh, it netted out that it seemed like it would um be compliant. Um, but that is, the other considerations um are um, as uh commissioners are said in twenty-four dash one eighty-three to consider the setback, um, not to exceed um eight by eight and um separated by a minimum of two feet. Um, so that's, that's that component, I guess. Um, and regarding the other aesthetics, I think that's more of an applicant question.
All right, is the architect able to, to speak to the, um. Your dimensions on the front of the building and the, um, garage door coverage, please?
We're, we're trying to come up with the calculated number here.
Alrighty, um, Krista, did you want to direct a question about aesthetics to the, um, to the development team or was that more to the commission?
The commission.
Okay, thank you.
I have an answer.
Yes, go ahead, Michael.
The, um. The overall width of the building is fifty feet. The two garages are ninety-nine, even if you take into consideration just the forward, you know, like you were talking about the, the. Main section of the building is forty feet wide. So if you take the eighteen foot total garages, you're less than fifty percent of even the forward part of the structure. If you take the overall fifty, then you're way under fifty percent. So even, even if you're just looking at this part of it's closest to the, uh, street. And of course we've pushed both garages back to six feet from the principal facade and they've got the cantilever over them. Either further emphasizing the fact that the garages are in shadow and pushed back away from the overall picture.
Thanks for that clarification. Um, and to the commission, um, we can move to, um, conversations about aesthetics or if there was anything still on, um. Um, on the rezoning, um, or the special land use questions.
To the chair.
Commissioner.
Yeah, some questions about the, the garage. From my reading of the ordinance, um. Section twenty-four, one eighty-three, one, two. Uh, it says a single garage door will not exceed eight feet in width or eight feet in height. It, it sounds from the applicant that it's nine feet. So, um. I, I would prefer reducing the prominence of the front-facing garage. So judging from the floor plans, it seems, and it, uh, might require some like. Unorthodox like design changes for the ground floor, but. That the second floor and the ground floor are kind of like structurally independent for like the, the walls in the middle. Of each floor, uh, at least from my reading, I could be wrong, didn't seem to be structural walls. So there's a possibility, for instance, that the garages could be moved to the sides of the, of the facade. And the front could be, for instance, two doors in the center with a shared front porch. And I know that would require some redrawing from the architecture team if that's something we would want to request, but. Um, yeah, I, I agree that it, it's, it's disappointing to see that the prominence of the front-facing garage. And I know that the applicants were clear about the five-foot setback from the columns. Um, I'm not sure if that entirely meets the intent of the definition of a facade in the ordinance, which. List specifically building walls, wall faces, parapets, fascia, windows, doors, canopies and visible roof structures. I, I'm kind of torn with the architectural intent of the. Column being to define negative space behind it, not to define like the face of a, like of a building wall. I'm kind of torn on that. So I'm curious to hear. The, oh, and sorry, just one more. Uh, even though the rendering showed it in shadow, I, I was wondering since it's south-facing and the garage doors would actually be quite lit during a sunny day. So it'd be visible. I don't know, I might be overthinking it. I've seen similarly shaped buildings with front-facing garages where in person it didn't feel quite as dramatic as in renderings. But yeah, I'm curious to hear the applicant's response.
Thank you. The applicants welcome to respond.
If, if you recall in a previous design, you had two separate garages and two separate driveways. And it was a pushback on that that said, can you consolidate the garages into one driveway? So what you just said was kind of intuitive to the information we received last time. Second, an eight-foot garage door, although that may be your code, is totally impractical in today's modern world of vehicles. No one does an eight-foot garage. I haven't done an eight-foot garage in years. If you want to clip off your side view mirrors. Um, if you want your F one fifty, even though, and now they come electric. So in today's modern world of cars, an eight-foot garage door is just that practical. Even in the smaller vehicles. And I'll testify as I had an eight-foot garage door, one of the first houses I had and I replaced the side view mirror twice. It's, it's a challenge getting into that. So.
So, so in terms of actually using a garage for parking, the nine-foot door is more practical, is what you're saying?
And eight-foot height is standard now also, which is allowed. But, you know, the garage doors used to be seven feet tall and that was also approved to be very practical in today's modern world. So, um. Again, I'm just, you know, pointing out that we had the previous design where we had the separate garages. And we were encouraged to merge them together into one driveway. So I'm just saying that's, we, we, you know.
Through the chair, I want to say, uh, I wasn't on the planning commission at the time, so I, I didn't mean to, uh, throw in conflicting statements. Cause I, I've been on the development side and know that that can be frustrating. So, so make it clear, but thank you.
Chair, if I may.
Yes, please, Commissioner Foster.
Um. So, well, to the point, I think we probably prefer the single driveway because it's, um, safer for pedestrians to have the one versus the two. Um, and if you have the two, there's probably more likelihood that they're just going to pave between and so more impervious surface other than, um, although that. Doesn't have to be the case. Um. But then, um, the other comment was, I believe that the, the upper floor facade will be at the post, um, foot, footage. So that will actually be the, the, the face facade on the front, um, at that, um. Whatever the term is. So there is the five-foot, um, difference between the garage door and the upper story height. And I believe that's why there's the shadow as well. So I sensed that architects didn't answer, I thought I would, um, into that. Um, so I think though to the point of the eight by eight, um, that would actually be a deviation from our zoning ordinance. Um. And so I'm not sure how we would. Be able to deal with that at this point. Um, it's, it would actually have to go to the BZA, I believe, to, um, allow the nine by nine.
Other. Questions and comments from the commission on any of the items tonight? Or is anyone prepared to make a motion? We have, um, we, we, we do need to, to kind of work through these in order, um. Related to the conditional rezoning. Special land use and then site plan, because should one fail the others? Would be moot. So. Either additional questions and discussion or we'd be looking for a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Did the applicant have something to add? Oh, okay.
I had a consideration given the input. Perhaps it would be beneficial for everyone taking in the input, input from the community, input from the commissioners. If we would table this so that we can reevaluate some of this input this evening.
So the applicant just, uh, suggested tabling this item, um, so they can reevaluate and take, um. The feedback and input that's come from the community and tonight's discussion, um, into account in their design. Uh, Justin, would that require a motion or is that a no action? Actually, that might be a question for the clerk.
Uh, that would be a motion.
Thank you. I, I get those confused. Is that a no action or should we actually have a motion to table? And, um, city clerk, would you want a motion to table all three things if someone were to propose that? Um. Cause we do have three proposed motions in front of us. How would you want that?
Uh, that's a good question. I think one motion would be sufficient to table all three items if it's such.
So it would be to table number seven A related to the conditional rezoning, special land use and site plan?
Right, because this is still one cohesive agenda item, even if it's covering three separate votes of the commission.
All right, thank you. All right. Well, we've just had a suggestion from our applicant. Um. We can still, uh, continue to move forward. Um, if someone wanted to put a motion on the table, um, to approve, deny or table. Um, related to any of the items, um, you know, we, we just need something to move us forward with some more discussion.
Commissioner Foster moves to table the matter of three nine seven East Breckenridge. Um, at the request of the developer to come back, um, to redesign with a redesigned project. Um, taking into consideration the, um, comments of, um. That were heard at the commission on three seventeen twenty-one.
Is there a second to that motion?
Support, Polica, Councilman Polica supports.
I have a motion from Commissioner Foster and a second from Commissioner Polica. Um, and just to, sorry, I was writing while you were talking, Michelle, to, to table this entire item, the conditional rezoning, special land use and site plan. Was that?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, any discussion on this motion?
Um, although it may be obvious, I think that the number of units is obviously, um, one of the bigger sticking points, um. Just make sure that the development team kind of understood, um, that aspect of it.
And for our city staff, um, before there's a vote taken, just for clarity for our audience this evening. Um, if this were to come back. Um, there may or, or may not, based on, on what the applicant proposes, be another public hearing and another public hearing notice. So how do people, um, so let's say this came back as something that fits in the R two and doesn't need a public hearing notice. How would people, um, you know, sort of stay on top of what's happening in their neighborhood? What's, what's the best way that you would want? To kind of get people's info because there's no sign-in sheet?
Sure, absolutely. Um, I think that, um, if folks are interested, I can type in my email into the chat. Um, I can be contacted, uh, that way. Um, and, um, I can, uh, answer any questions or keep people updated. Um, this particular project didn't necessarily warrant like a project page like we typically do. But if that is a request from the planning commission, we can do that. And otherwise, if we, um, have, um, anything else, um, that comes up, you know, if that requires a public hearing notice. Certainly we'll have a public hearing notice. And I did get a message that, um, our clerk will add a seamless sign into the chat if we, um, want to use it that way. So it looks like Justin just put that into the chat for us. Um, so that could be a way. People updated that way as well.
Thank you. So the motion on the table, um, delays any action on this. Um, and it doesn't mean that it will come back in exactly the same form. That's just what I wanted to be, to be clear about. Um, so just in case there isn't, um, you know, something that requires a public hearing. Uh, it means you wouldn't get something in your mailbox necessarily, but there are ways to keep in touch. Typically when we're in person, there's a sign-in sheet. Um, so it's easy for city staff to keep people updated. So there's a virtual sign-in sheet that was just shared in the Zoom chat. Um. Erin's email address also is E Q U E T E L L. At FerndaleMI.gov. Of course, you can also call the planning department, um. But I, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear on what the motion was, um, before we voted on it. Any other discussion on the motion?
I just wanted to say, thank you. I said, the number of units is, I would say massing is probably, um, more appropriate way to phrase what I said, um, earlier, so.
Thanks, Commissioner Foster. Any other discussion on this motion? All right, we will have a roll call vote from our city clerk, please.
Uh, Commissioner Hagforce.
Yes.
Commissioner Hosky.
Yes.
Councilman Polica.
Yes.
Commissioner Shawalter.
Yes.
Commissioner Azar.
Yes.
Commissioner Braga.
Yes.
Commissioner Brazen.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
And Chair Baker.
Yes, thank you. Thank you to, um, to the neighbors and the property owners. Thank you, um, to our applicants and our city staff as we work through this. Um. Uh, I hope that we, um, see something back and, um, our city team will work to keep neighbors informed. Um, as the process moves forward. Thank you. All right, we will move to. Our new business item this evening. Um, again, this isn't a public hearing, but there, there will be an opportunity for public comment, just like we've done on, on every, um, on every item, public comment or questions. Uh, this is item number eight A, new business consideration for site plan approval of one, one, two, zero, east nine mile. We will start with an introduction from our city staff. We'll then, um, receive some information from the applicant and then we will see if there are any questions or comments from the public.
Thank you, Chair Baker. Uh, again, Justin Lyons, planning manager from the city. Uh, so the application this evening for consideration is a site plan, uh, approval at eleven twenty east nine mile road. Uh, this particular proposal is for, uh, roughly six thousand square foot mixed-use, um, project. With, uh, fifteen hundred square feet of ground level retail space as well as nineteen upper level residential units. Those are, uh, split between ten one-bedroom units and nine two-bedroom units. Um, the site's currently zone C two general commercial. Um, so, um. If you're familiar with, um, zoning, there, uh, are permitted uses within each of those districts. And so within the C two district, upper level residential and ground level retail uses are permitted in those districts. Um, just similar to the previous application, the site plan was reviewed, uh, by planning, engineering, police and fire department. Um, for technical compliance with the zoning ordinance. Um, it's a preliminary, real preliminary engineering and fire was reviewed. Typically, most of that deeper engineering and fire department and building department review is part of, um, the building plans in the middle, which is separate after a site plan. Um, this particular project, um, does, it did qualify for the city council's enhanced notice policy. Where projects of a certain height and density, um. Are noticed via email or excuse me, via mail, five hundred feet around the property, um, to property owners and occupants. Um, as well as a project page was created on the city website. Um, and documents and, uh, general processes are updated and, uh, the proposal was shared there as well. Um. At a high level, the, um, site, as I said, zone C two general commercial, there is one parcel as part of the site. Um, the site does connect with a public alley that, um, is still utilized, uh, I believe by the current occupants on each side of it. Um, the future land use map denotes this parcel as commercial and slash office as a guide. Um, so this proposal is, uh, in alignment with the master plan. Um, so staff a- as usually, or as usual during, um, reviews, looked at access management, circulation, landscaping, lighting. Um, stormwater management, um, parking and general building design requirements. Uh, so that, really this site plan overall, um, did meet generally all the zoning ordinance requirements, uh, particularly for parking. And that the parking requirements for, uh, the retail type use and the upper level residential use. As well as met the, uh, bicycle parking ordinance and the, um, electric vehicle charging station ordinance as well. So, um, it's nice to see some of those, uh, recent ordinance amendments be put into use on a site plan, providing some more transportation options. Um, for visitors to and from the site. Um. The C two general commercial district, um, the requirements for maximum height. Um, is fifty feet and this proposal meets, uh, aligns with that maximum height. Um, if you review the staff report at all, there are, um, not quite as many of lot size and lot with requirements and those sorts of things. Um, but those items were noted, um, on the site plan. Uh, the front setback is based on the setbacks of the nearby, um, buildings. And so the front setback of twenty-two feet, there's also a pretty wide right of way there, uh, just that is under the city's, um. Jurisdiction. Um, there's already an existing sidewalk that connects, um, the building to the public sidewalk. Um. As well as, um. Other circulation, the parking that is underneath the building, um, the circulation rather than the existing driveway that is on nine mile road at the current structure. Um, all the circulation will be moved to the public alley, um, which is something that, um, is required when an alley is present, um, in the ordinance. So, um, everything's kind of centralized there, which is nice to have. in the ordinance. So everything's kind of centralized there, which is nice to have a driveway closed off of nine mile. Regarding the rest of the building design, the applicant did provide the primary and secondary materials for this particular site. I did want to note in in my staff report as well as in the findings. The proposal did include primarily brick veneer and fiber cement siding as part of the proposal as the commissions where the architectural compatibility and building materials ordinance is probably a year and a half old, two years old at this point. And so, you know, still seeing some things that we may want to clarify on the next update, but essentially the applicant did propose fiber cement siding, which is something that we allow for multiple family residential buildings. This particular building does have a mixture of uses. So the applicant does want to move forward with those types of or with with that type of primary material and they can talk more about that in their presentation, but by note in the staff report was essentially, you know, the commission may want to confirm the ordinance intent around that type of building material and the ordinance or the applicant may want to pursue that waiver that is available in section two four one eighty nine nine. From a landscaping perspective, there are some trees that are proposed to be replaced on site. The applicant is requesting repayment or payment into the city's tree fund, which is in the findings of this staff report. But otherwise, the applicant was able to preserve one existing tree. They met all the other tree requirements. They did provide the required screening to the rear, to the residences to the rear. Lighting plan appears to meet all the ordinance requirements, same for the waste receptacle. Engineering details were provided and engineers preliminarily recommended the information with pending a final plan submittal. So at this point, staff does recommend the site plan due to align with the master plan and compliance with zoning ordinances. As I said, there are five condition or findings that are proposed, including one related to the fiber cement siding, one related to the tree requirement, and then two conditions included, which are pretty typical for this type of development, which is final engineering plans are required with building plans and then a tree permit. Which would be required for any new trees planted on site. But I'm happy to answer any questions. I know the applicants are here and also for the applicant, I'm happy to either share my screen or promote you as co-host to share yours presentation.
Thanks, Justin. Welcome to the applicants this evening. Would you like to share your screen or would you like to have Justin navigate the PowerPoint? And you're you're muted at this point, Mr. Howard, sorry.
Considering that Justin is much more attuned to this than I am, maybe maybe it's better he shares his screen.
Yep, certainly. Yep. You can just kind of give him the high sign when you want him to to change slides. That works for us just fine.
Well, he did. He did a phenomenal job in in presenting it, so.
Would you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Brian Howard, HF Architecture. I'm the architect for the project. We also have Jack, who's one of the owners on as well, who can answer any ownership questions regarding the project. You know, when when Jack and Maurice came to me on this project, as you know, it's it's a single family house, quite a large piece of property. But but in an area that really does need redevelopment. And when they came to me, they said, what can we get on this site? And I and I presented to Justin a couple of different options. One was to use the alley, but also have an exit or an entrance out onto nine mile. And he said, well, boy, if we could eliminate that nine mile exit or entrance, that would be ideal. So we then kind of switched gears a bit. And went with a project that we felt was really accommodating, using Bonner as our ingress and egress on this property. But what it did was once you put the parking in, once you had the twenty two foot setback off of the front setback off of nine mile. It made for a very narrow building. It's a very linear building. And ownership, Jack and Maurice are okay with the fact that we don't have, you know, large amounts of retail. Would they like more? Certainly, they would like more, but understood that the retail here is, you know, could could go a good couple of different directions. It could go more like insurance companies or office. It could go coffee shop. It could go, there, there, there's many different avenues. I think that 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 allows us some flexibility on that on that ground for retail. The critical piece to this is in the C two, we're allowed fifty feet. And we we utilize that to our advantage where we were able to create nineteen units. But those top units are actually two story units. And when those two story units allow you to capture views of downtown, they they they, we face most of the units to the south or to the west, which allowed us to get outdoor patios, you know, rooftop type units. It really did work out to our benefit to to. You know, a lot of times, you know, when you do these projects and and the design of these projects kind of evolve. The linearness or the east west direction of this particular building actually benefited us because we were able to you know, keep ourselves away from the neighbors to the south and and create a nice presence on the street. So I I don't feel that we really had to compromise a tremendous amount with regards to how the parking was going to work because as all of us know, most of these projects are, you know, determined by how much parking can you get on the site? And and so this one actually worked out where we were able actually able to get all the parking on site. And still get our nineteen units and get some retail. So the other nice thing about this is the twenty two feet. Originally, I was very frustrated with, you know, off that sidewalk off of nine mile. Then I started thinking, well, wait a minute. A retail space during COVID times would be great to have an outdoor seating area or patio or something to that effect, which allows people to come to a space. Not necessarily go inside or go inside for a minute with their mask on and then go outside and sit outside and enjoy the weather. Or igloos in the winter or whatever it happens to be. So so actually, it actually it actually helped us, in my opinion, in terms of trying to create a nice streetscape. I think I think in the report, you know, Justin even made mention of, you know, a nice pedestrian walkway, a pedestrian gathering space. You know, I called it an entrance plaza. You know, we're intending on putting benches, we're intending to put, as you can see, we're putting a tremendous amount of landscaping to create a nice buffer between nine mile traffic and and in our in our building. You know, Justin, I I I do believe you have our three D renderings, you know, in that package as well. If you could, if you could just show those, I'm I'm sure the commission has seen them in the package. But what I wanted to, what I wanted to state with regards to the renderings was the idea of creating a building that just isn't a long linear building, but it actually does have you know, numerous material changes. You know, he, we talked about, you know, he talked about as well as we did, he and I about the cement fiberboard siding. There's the majority of the of the project is brick. But to create a lighter, you know, the the idea is is to to really allow the building to to open itself up. And the reason we put large expanses of glass. The reason we created an entrance kind of at mid block of the building, the reason we created cantilevers is to allow the building to create some depth. It creates movement. You know, and and I try and do this in in all the buildings I design, but this one in particular felt comfortable because of the fact that as you get to Bonner, as you're moving from, you know, east to west. It really does start to open itself up. It really does to create this airiness, this this kind of this this hovering effect that's occurring, you know, at the corner. Which I feel is very important to a building. I think a building should have depth. It should create a three dimension even beyond just seeing it as three dimension. You know, the cantilevers, I feel, are very important to 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 allow that 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 second, third and fourth floors to really create, you know, an object, an element on that corner. So I've probably said more than I should, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Brian. Was there anything that the owners wanted to add at this time? Or are you kind of the designated? Sorry, we're we're back. We're back in that spot where I can only see four people, so I can't tell if someone's waving at me.
Hi, this is this is Jack. Nice to meet you all.
Hi, welcome.
Besides being excited to do this project, I think Brian hit everything that we are trying to do here from parking, the green areas, the building. We are really excited about this new development here.
Thank you, Jack. Welcome. Yeah, sorry, we're, Justin, if you could unshare your screen, we're kind of back in that thing where I can only see four people. Ah, better. Okay, thank you. Now I can see if someone's flagging me or or I'm muting. All right, what we're going to do now is see if there are any questions or comments from the public before we take questions and comments from the commission. So if there's anyone here, Erin and Justin will will help us identify anyone who's got their hand raised in Zoom or anyone who's kind of flagging us on the video. Anyone from the public who's got a question or a comment related to consideration of site plan approval for one one two zero east nine mile. You are welcome to to join the conversation now and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello.
Three minutes for comments. Yes, hello.
Hello, this is Steve Block.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you for having me. Twenty year resident living on Rosewood Street, very closest property. Have serious concerns on why we need nineteen one nineteen units on this property. I just think it's overkill. My neighbor across the street, we talked about it the other day. I mean, I know where that place is at. It's right next to my vat is just, it seems like overkill. I don't understand why we need nineteen nineteen residences there. Seems way, way too much. Right now, there's one house there. I mean, how about a scaled back version of maybe five residences? Why do we need nineteen with retail? I like the way Ferndale is right now, as far as like, you know, some parts are built up, but other parts aren't. Just I'm not happy with it, to be honest with you. And that's pretty much where I'm at with it.
Thanks, Stephen. Any other questions or comments from the audience at this time? You can raise your hand via Zoom. Erin can call on people who are here on the phone.
I do not see anybody who has called in, actually.
Okay, thank you.
I got a couple of questions. Another question, too, if I could ask.
Sure, I see. I see Stephen and then I see the Galaxy S ten plus next.
Okay. The vat, is that building going to stay there, the existing vat, little friends of Ferndale?
Stephen, I'm going to have you just go through all of your comments and questions. We're keeping notes and then we'll we'll address them once we get everyone's comments in.
Okay, okay.
So you can keep going.
Okay. Yeah, want to make sure that that that's still going to be there. Obviously, I'm not sure if that's going to be an issue. And let me get this straight. You're going to build a five unit complex next to the police or the fire station. Is this correct? Okay. That's it. I I leave it to you guys.
Thanks, Stephen.
Thank you.
Yep. And then I saw also the Galaxy S ten E caller.
Say, can you hear me? Can you hear?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, go ahead, Sharon.
Okay. I live behind the one that destroyed.
Welcome. Would you state your name for the record, please?
Oh. My name's Sharon DeGracia.
Thank you.
We've lived here for almost fifteen years, fifty years. And I I don't agree with what you're doing at all. It's just, it's just not right. It's just not right. My address is eleven thirty one East Troy.
Thanks, Sharon. Was was there anything in particular that that you wanted to share about the development that that you're not that you feel isn't right?
Yeah, it's just not right that you would tear down a house that's been there forever.
Go ahead. It's still on there.
And build a stupid condo. Whatever you're going to build, whatever it is, it's going to be too big. And it's just it's just ridiculous. Okay.
She's she's concerned about her privacy and stuff over here as well.
Yeah, because the people will be able to see through our windows. And like with my neighbor's windows. What's it say? You know, is it just not right? It's just not right. And that's all I got to say about it. It's true. It's it's just not right.
Thank you. All right, additional comments and questions from the audience. I see I see Michael and then I see Raymond.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. I'm a neighbor just to the south as well. I do share some of the concerns as voiced by some of my other neighbors. Just go through a couple of questions. I was just kind of wondering how long this plan has been in development for starters. So I have just some clarification on that. And just what the timetable might look like. When might the demolition and construction actually begin? I know that there's going to be nineteen residential units, as I understand it. And then also nineteen parking spaces. And I just have concerns about you know, you have multiple people with multiple cars living in an apartment complex. You know, I just, I feel like there would always be car overflow into the surrounding streets that I'm on. I'm on Troy Street. For the, I don't know if Michael Figgy is my name for the record. I don't know if I'd say that or not, but I also was looking at the blueprints about the they're going to build a concrete wall across the back line. And this kind of circles back to my first question about how long it's been developed for. You know, I just dropped a lot of money on a privacy fence that's now, you know, totally nullified because I'm going to have nineteen people looking down into my into my yard. And of course, in the blueprints, they're going to rip out the vinyl fencing, it says. And so, you know, this fence is about six, seven months old. And now I spent all that money and it's just being torn out. So that's very frustrating for me. So I was just wondering if any of those concerns or or questions could be addressed. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, that was Michael Figgy on Troy Street. And then I also saw Raymond. Yes, welcome.
You're on mute, Raymond.
Here we go, sorry. Ray Jeffrey, eleven oh five East Troy. So I'm the house directly on the corner of Bonner and East Troy. I'd share some of the concerns. Um, I'd share some of the concerns with my neighbors. Uh, one thing with extra traffic, extra parking. Uh, one issue on Bonner is trucks that leave the industrial sites just south of us. A lot of those trucks are parking on that corner, and a lot of times block that alleyway. So I don't know what's gonna happen with twenty plus vehicles trying to get in and out with addition to semi trucks, straight trucks, you know, coming in and out of there. Um, other than that, you know, I do understand that, you know, the, the neighborhood's growing and Ferndale is changing, and that's, you know. But it's just the consideration of, you know, any way that we could move traffic, keep the trucks moving in a different direction, or consideration of how that's gonna work, you know. Uh, that's pretty much it for, on my end.
Thank you, Ray.
No problem.
Alright, additional questions or comments from the public at this time? Aaron, have you got anyone else at this time?
Not that I can see, and I don't think that there's any other calls.
Okay. I see Galaxy S ten E.
Yep.
Yep, Galaxy S ten E, you can unmute yourself, and please state your name for the record.
Yep, this is Vincent's Bring Guards. Easement, because I'm the alley that's right there. My garage is the only one that goes to the street. And in the privacy, everybody can see you. I mean, it's, then we got all the traffic going up and down. And about it.
Thank you. There was a little bit of feedback at the beginning. Would you state your name and address for the record again, please? Sorry about that.
Vincent Bring Guard, eleven nineteen East Troy Street.
Thank you, Vincent. Alright, additional questions and comments? Um, I see that Alan's put one into the chat, Alan, um, if you're able to come off mute and share that one. Well, I did see it pop up. It looks like he's not able to. The question
Here Baker, I can read it.
About how many are planned to be made readily accessible, um, so physically accessible, Alan? Is that correct? I'm making an assumption, I just wanna clarify, I mean, based on prior conversations, that he's talking about physically, physical accessibility? Alright. Yes, thank you very much, Alan. Okay.
Through the chair, um, staff did receive two phone calls, um, about the project. One from, um, Mark, he did not give his address, uh, but his concern was also related to parking. Um, and then I did receive a call from Mike, which I think might be Michael F. that chimed in, so hopefully it is.
Yeah, that was correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you for your feedback and joining, um, but those were the only two contacts that I received.
Thank you, and Michael's email was similar to the discussion this evening.
Uh, Mark, um, the other caller, he, he just, it was just a call, um, but yeah, his, his concern was, uh, parking. Um, and, and, and didn't, um, agree with the, uh, zoning ordinance requirement for, uh, retail or residential.
Okay, thank you. Alright, um, to our applicants, um, let's talk with, about conversations about parking. Uh, this is, uh, one of the uh, applications, um, that's come before us that hasn't requested a parking waiver. Um, so if you would talk about how you see, um, your parking balance working, um, sort of between daytime and, and evening uses. Um, and if you are aware of and have, um, um, you know, thought about the truck traffic, um, and things that may be impacting your, your alley access. Let's start with that, parking and, and accessibility off of Bonner.
Well, I mean, um, you know, we meet the parking requirements, uh, based on nineteen units, based on
Yes, absolutely, yes.
So, I mean, we're not asking for a variance for that, so we, we meet the ordinance with regards to parking. We also meet the ordinance on almost every aspect of this project. Um, you know, regardless of whether the neighbors like it or don't like it, C two allows for fifty feet. They allow for this type of building type, so, uh, you know, it's, everybody can state their opinion and, and state why they don't like something, but change is gonna happen, um, and progress is going to happen. Um, to, to, to comment on, um, the concrete wall that we have to put in, that's a, that's a zoning ordinance, um, issue. I don't wanna take the guy's vinyl fence down, but how do I, how do I meet the zoning ordinance of creating a six foot high concrete wall without taking his vinyl fence down?
But, you know, actually, that was, um, so, uh, to Justin, uh, how, how would that work? Um, I mean, if, if a fence is on, um, on Michael's property, um, or on the property line, how, you know, how is that addressed? So we put up, um, you know, concrete separate, concrete block separations between different types of uses. So now we've got a, um, a commercial use backing up to residential, so to create both a barrier between headlights and sound and, and other things, we, we separate those uses with things like concrete, concrete block walls. Um, so would you, would you talk about, um, you know, how that's handled when someone's just put in a new fence, or if it's on their property?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so the, generally, the ordinance is there for protection, um, to ensure that headlights and, uh, all, a host of other things, um, don't spill over from a, you know, commercial mixed use site or industrial sites residential, so it's, it's generally there for protection, um, to kind of separate those types of uses. Uh, however, I, I, I would say that, um, screening walls are required to be on the lot line. Um, and so usually that does allow for, you know, sometimes fences to be back to back. Um, but the other item that, uh, we always encourage that applicants try and work with their neighbors on something that's harmonious. Um, and so the planning commission in section two, four, one ninety-four, nine, um, they are able to modify these requirements for screening walls if there's considered to be a more effective or harmonious development with the neighboring, um, adjacent land uses, so there is that opportunity there for property owners to work together, uh, next to each other, but I imagine back in two thousand and ten or before, when this ordinance was created, it was, there was probably an in- in instance where a screen wall wasn't required, and it, it probably was a not great situation for probably residents next door or something like that, so, uh, there are opportunities for, for these two, uh, for the developer and the adjacent property owners to work together on a wall. But, you know, this, this is just based on this district requirement as a, as a minimum to make sure there's some separation, so.
So is the, is the fence that, that Michael just put up, is that, is that on his property? Is that something that's being impacted by the wall? Can you, can you clarify that?
We'd have to look at the survey. I think that'd be more of a question for the, the architect or the surveyor.
It appears, it, it appears, um, that the vinyl fence, if I'm, if I'm reading it correctly in the survey, the vinyl fence, not the chain link fence, is actually on his property and actually not on the property line. So what that would allow us to do is either to keep his vinyl fence intact a- a- and, and extend a vinyl fence ver- versus a concrete wall, or place our concrete wall in front of his vinyl fence and leave his vinyl fence, you know, that he just spent money on, and then I don't wanna rip somebody's fence out that he just spent a lot of money on putting in. Um, and it looks like we might have a little bit of a gap there that potentially would allow us to, to keep his, keep his right there.
Um, Justin, how, how is that communicated with neighbors?
So, and then, I guess,
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry. I think the, the other thing, too, um, you know, uh, when, so basically, any project that moves forward, there is a pre-construction meeting where we talk about demolition and stuff like that, and so that's, that's also where, um, you know, of course, we encourage developers to speak with neighbors in advance and talk about fences and trees and other things, but, uh, that, that is usually where that type of thing is ironed out, and we don't just let developers come in and just obliterate, um, fences and things like that, so if they were to, they would have to provide us a demolition plan. If that demolition plan were to show, you know, for example, a neighbor's fence was actually built on, you know, the northern property line, or, or property owner's property on accident or something like that, that's where there's a conversation set up and stuff like that, so. Just because it says on the plan that the, you know, the other fences will be removed, it really depends on where those fences are, and that's where that fine detail, the demolition plan comes into play, which, um, so. Hopefully, that's not too many words and clear, clear, but.
Uh, no, I just, I just wanna try and figure out how the neighbor gets engaged in that demolition plan.
Yeah, so our, our, our building team, that's when they step in and they review the demo plan, and they say, well, this fence, you can't just rip out this fence, um, that's, that's the neighbor's property, so that's where, um, we would broker, you know, meeting between developer and, um, neighbors.
Thank you, that was the clarification I was looking for.
Sorry.
Um, thank you. Uh, there was a question about, um, whether or not the Little Friends of Ferndale building, um, is part of this development? Can the, the applicant clarify that?
It is not part of our project. Um, that is, that, that building to the east of us sits right on the property line. We specifically held our building off of that east property line, so we did not affect that building at all. Um, as a matter of fact, we pulled our building far enough off that property line where we then provided landscaping and a nice buffer between that building and our building.
Thank you. There was also a question about whether or not this is next to the fire station. Yes, this is across Bonner Street from the fire station. Thank you.
To answer your question, uh, with regards to trucks stacking, I have no idea. I mean, I mean, it's, it's, it's one of those things where we have a public alley there, and, and I, and I heard the comments from the, the, the homeowner that's, you know, has access to that public alley, his garage actually uh, accesses that public alley. Justin and I talked about this at, at great length, about keeping his access intact. The, 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 the reason why we put our trash enclosure where we did was to, to, to keep him, to basically still give him the ability to pull in and exit out of his garage via that alley and not be affected by trash trucks and things like that, so, um, he's not getting, you know, um, blocked in or, or, or anything to that effect. I mean, we, we, we really took a lot of effort to, to make sure that he was, he still had, you know, garage access to that. Regarding the truck stacking, I couldn't tell you. I mean, it's, that's, that's a city issue. It's not a development issue.
Well, it, you know, it may become something that your building management team needs to be aware of.
Of course.
So.
For sure, right. If they start blocking our driveway, yeah.
Precisely.
That will get addressed sooner than later, right?
Mm-hmm. Um, so the question about alley access, Justin, because this faces a public alley, there's no need for an easement? It's been, it's been managed, so the alley access is maintained?
Correct. The alley will remain public. It's maintained, um, anytime, uh, an alley like this, and there's a shared access for new development, just for the record, we, we always review that to make sure that, you know, existing garages and all that can still access, um, that, um, regarding the loading and, and backups of semi trucks, the city's definitely aware of that. It's sort of a, a, a tough situation in that, you know, we're a older community, community with a lot of existing industrial who probably weren't required to, you know, build the loading zones and stuff like that, that we require now. Um, and so, you know, it's something that, that, yeah, I mean, this, that would become a police issue. Um, if, uh, if there were blocks, uh, blockages and stuff like that, sorry. Especially with the fire department nearby, it's kind of nice that they can keep an eye on that sort of thing.
Thank you. Uh, there was a question about the number of units. Um, the number of units that's per- that's proposed is, is permitted in this district. Um, um, and I believe the plans, Justin, um, there was also a question about how long this plan has been in development. Um, this is the first time the planning commission is seeing this. When did the city receive? Have you guys been working on this for a while, or come relatively recently?
I think pretty recently, I'd say. I mean, so generally, the requirement, um, for a site plan is, um, if someone submits a site plan, they need to do so, um, four weeks to three weeks before a meeting. Um, so they were aiming for, I think, a prior meeting, and, and that's where we said, well, you have to, we have to send the notice to the adjacent neighborhood, um, five hundred feet around the property, um, at least fifteen days in advance, and so we did do that, so, um, we probably had the plans for about a month, I guess.
Okay.
And so this is the updated version after our first review.
Thank you. And to the applicant, uh, what would your construction timeline be? What are you guys looking at?
Um, well, the, the plan right now is to, um, clo- close on the property, uh, by the end of April. Probably, realistically, um, I think we're looking at probably a late summer construction start date. And it's gonna be about a year to build it.
Thank you. Um, the other question before we move to planning commissioners, um, several people have ta- oh, I'm sorry, two more. Um, sorry, let's talk about physical accessibility. Uh, there was a question about, um, compliance with, um, with ADA requirements, uh,
Every, every unit has.
Accessible units.
Accessibility.
I'm sorry, I talked over you a little bit. Will you say that again?
No, uh, I, I'm sorry, every unit has ADA accessibility. Um, the elevator goes to every floor.
Thank you.
It will all be type B accessible units. They will not be type A, so.
Can you clarify for me what that means?
Yeah, what that means is, um, a type B accessibility unit um, is not as restrictive as a type A. But what happens is the building code states that as soon as you bump in from nineteen units to twenty units, you have to provide for type A units, which, what that means is you're, uh, you are providing for, um, more wheelchair accessibility versus disability accessibility, so, um, not that the B units don't have to be wheelchair accessible, they do. We actually have to have a roll-in shower, you have to have seats in your shower, you have to have turn of, you know, the, the five-foot radius, all those things. I, I, I'm getting too complicated, but the point is that all the units will be, um, accessible.
Thank you. No, you're definitely not getting too complicated. That, that was helpful, um, particularly to know about how much of the, of the unit is accessible. It's not just that you can get through a doorway. Thank you.
Right.
Um, so then there were a number of conversations of, uh, comments about privacy, um, and, you know, you can, you can hear, it's, it, it's a, it's a big change on that corner. I realize that this is a permitted use, um, but to have some, um, some compassion and some understanding for people behind you who've been there for a long time, this is a big change, so. Would you, would you talk with us about, you know, have you done any sightline studies, or, you know, in terms of where residents are looking, or maybe where your windows are placed on that south facade, um, and kind of looking into people's backyards?
Well, the one thing we did do, I will say this, is that the only balcony units or patio rooftop units are on the top floor. So we did not provide any balconies for any of the units on floors two or three. Uh, and there was reason for that. Um, there, there was the, the notion of people not, you know, from a noise standpoint, from, um, you know, people hanging out on their balconies. Um, yes, can you open a window in those units? Of course you can, but you can't walk out onto and hang out on a balcony looking over into somebody's backyard. You know, uh, we felt, though, as you went higher, it became less of an issue, and, and maybe I'm wrong in that, but, but in my opinion, I felt that as we got up higher at forty-three feet, um, those balconies or patios do not extend out past the facade of the building. They actually are re- Um, those balconies or patios do not extend out past the facade of the building. They actually are recessed back. So somebody's not hanging off the edge or, 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 or looking down, I guess, for, for lack of a better way to put it. Um, but it, but one needs to also understand too that. We're a nineteen-unit building, but only ten units are on the south as you, as you go up. So, so there's, there's half the units face Nine Mile or face Bonner. Um, so. It's, it's not like I have nineteen units that are staring at people's backyards. Do I have ten of them? Sure. Of course I do. Um, but I also try to. Create a buffer zone or, or, you know, I'm not building right up to that property line. I'm also not building right up to my setback line either. So I, you know, just to give you some rough math, you know, off that back property line or that south property line. I am probably close to, and I don't have the dimension in front of me, but it's, it's well over twenty-five feet. Twenty-seven feet to the face of the facade from that south property line.
Thank you. I did notice the um, the resourcing of the, the patios on the upper floors. So that, thank you. That's a helpful clarification. Um, and it looked like um, some of them were more directed toward, um, you know, views toward Nine Mile.
Um, correct.
As opposed to, to the south.
Yeah.
All right.
There's actually only two, uh, there's actually only two that face, that face the south. The other ones face Bonner and then the fourth level unit, the fifth s- unit faces Nine Mile.
Okay. And you're confident that there's enough parking and just in terms of your, your market demand, um. Uh, and, and how you want to use the space. I just want to come back to, to parking one more time. You guys are, are comfortable with what's provided on sites. You know, from your market calculations and your number of bedrooms and who you think's moving in and using this, you know, this, this feels like a market. In, in addition to an ordinance-driven decision, the market feels right as well.
We are confident with that. Um, one, because we do feel that it's, it's a shared parking concept. Um, we, we also believe that um, you know, we, we provided, you know. A number of units that are quote unquote covered. Um, they, 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 they have the building over them. Um, there are numerous, uh, I think there's eleven that are not covered. Um, we feel that those are the ones that are probably the retail or whatever those daily uses are. Um, will, will be, will be those spots. Now. During these COVID times, we know that a lot of people are not going to an office anymore, right? They're working from home or whatever. Um, we also feel that. This retail space, this first floor space becomes very valuable space um, for somebody to. Be able to have a meeting with somebody. They don't want them up in their apartment or their condo. Um. That, that's just not, not the way people feel comfortable um, operating in, you know, in today's market. So, yes, there probably will be, you know, more people at home during the day than what we're used to. But we also feel that, we also have a surplus of parking for the retail, uh, being that the retail is very small. Um, you know, at one point I asked Justin what the option or the opportunity might be to create parallel spots. Along Nine Mile because we have such that huge buffer of right-of-way, you know, it'd be great to develop three or four parallel spots along there. Didn't seem to carry much weight. Didn't seem to go very far with my discussion, but.
I defer to Justin on the right-of-way questions, but um.
It's probably not his call either.
Yeah, yeah. Um, the. Oh, go ahead.
No, I mean, you know, it, it, it really is not my call. I think um, I definitely um, you know, understand the parking concerns. Um, I do think that there's a kind of a balance of, you know, daytime and nighttime use i- i- in that area, just based on my experience, but. Um, I would say that, you know, uh, I think that there's enough conflicts of. Uh, in the right-of-way on East Nine Mile and we've, we've kind of, the city's. Pushed to, you know, improve biking and transit there. And so I, I think the on-street parking might erode some of the safety and issues we have like across. The city with some on-street parking, but um, it really is not truly my decision, but.
Thank you. All right. A quick question for me. Um, while we're talking about the retail spaces, will they have their own entrances? Um, at Nine Mile or is the circulation all internal? Thinking about what you were saying about. Patios and sort of that, that easy access during COVID, um, you know, and having that access from, for pedestrians as well as people who are driving in. Cause you've got a, a great neighborhood, um, to the south and to the north.
No, I understand your question. Um, Justin, if you could pull up A one O one. Um.
Just making sure that the pedestrians can kind of easily get in and out. It's, you know, obviously we're all thinking about it a lot more recently.
Sure.
Thank you.
So we actually have uh, entrances both from Nine Mile as well as from the parking area into the retail spaces. So the idea was that people who were, who were walking, um, you know, on Nine Mile wanted to grab. Whatever happens to be in there. Oh, that's a coffee or something to that effect. Um, they have the ability to, to come in there. And the idea was really, and you can see on the A one O one there, um. You know, the outdoor seating area, which we felt was very important to create um, outdoor seating with benches and things like that, tables. On the renderings, we actually put in tables with umbrellas and, and, and certain things like that. So the idea was, is that if somebody, you know, comes in, they park in the parking lot, they can enter from the back. Or if you're walking on the street, you can, you can enter from, from the Nine Mile side, uh, i- i- in, in both retail spaces.
Thank you. Um, my last question, I'm going to turn it over to the commission. Um. In terms of, you know, as, as you guys are, are moving forward. Um, you know, if, if site plan passes tonight and you're moving forward with um, uh, demolition planning. Would you be open to, and, and, and just an idea, um, but would you be open to maybe a collaboration with the? Um, the, oh, I've just blanked on the name of my, of the construction academy that's around the corner. We have a, a carpenter's training center, um, just around the corner. Um. Uh, you know, would you guys be open to like a deconstruction project or something, you know, providing it, it fit your timeline? Um, to try to salvage things from the house or to, you know, to be kind of a, a learning project for some of our young uh, people who are construction trainees? I, I kind of, I, I asked our, um, our, our former mayor, who's now our county executive, when I saw this come through last week, I. I asked him, I said, do you think, you know, that, you know, maybe there's a way to turn this into not a total loss of that house, but, you know. Um, have it, have some new life through something like deconstruction and if the carpenter's training center might be open to that. And, you know, he seemed to think that they might be, but I wasn't sure if the applicants would be.
Um, I don't, I don't think my client would be opposed to that at all. Um, I think, I think they're, 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 they're certainly. Um, you know, want to be part of the community. They certainly want to, um, it's not the only project they're looking at uh, either. So um, I think they're, they're in it for the long haul. They're, they're not selling these either. They're, they're going to own the building. They're going to, these are going to become rentals.
Okay.
So I, I would say that um, absolutely they would be um, accommodating to, to, to help any, you know, young. You know, carpenter-type people that, you know, I mean, we've got a garage we have to demo. We have a house we have to demo. We got trees we have to take out. I mean, it's a, it's pretty extensive.
Yep. Um, okay. So I will, um, I'll continue that conversation and I'll share an update with, with city staff when I hear back from Dave. Um, I just wanted to kind of put that idea out there, um, to see if perhaps there's a way to, to add a little bit of. You know, value, make this a little bit different, you know, as things are moving forward. Thank you.
For sure.
Okay, um, looking at our planning commission members. Questions and comments for the applicant or our staff, please. Commissioner Schalter.
Yes, looking at the uh, at, there's basically two asks, uh, tree replacement and whether or not fiber cement is promoted as a primary building material. Those are the two main asks. And not really the size of the building, the type of the building and all that, like we. Can't deny it based on that because it's all permitted by right. So there's. Not really anything we can do on that because it's all based on what's required in the C two. But uh, looking at the, looking at the fiber cement, I don't believe fiber cement can be considered a primary building material. Because this is a mixed-use building. The mixed uses are commercial and residential and it's a mixed-use building type. You, I don't. I, I know multi-family residential allows for si- um, a fiber cement board being a primary building type, but. This is a mixed-use building because you're mixing the uses of a residential and a commercial in my mind. So. That would preclude a primaries, uh, fiber cement board being able to be used as a primary material and would limit it only to a second material. But that, that would be my interpretation of the ordinance.
Thanks, Commissioner Schalter. Other commissioners?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Braga?
Hmm. Yeah, what's the mechanism if we wanted to allow that exception? Kind of like when we had the Iron Ridge and we were like able to. Um, waive the requirement for like breaking the building physically. Um, is material something that we can also waive?
So my interpretation was that two, four, one eighty-four, nine is that waiver section. Being that it's the building materials fall within the building design that, um, you know, A through E are the, the considerations for that. And so that's kind of where I was leaning as well, but um, you know, just wanted to pose that to the, the, the question that was asked to me, um, to the group. But yeah, number nine would be the mechanism to consider a waiver.
To consider a waiver to allow fiber cement, are you saying?
As a primary, primary material.
Why, wh- what I don't get for that waiver is why would, what's the reasoning behind it? Why would we consider a waiver if, if it's, we've spelled out an ordinance with Form B that we. Only, like, there has to be good reason for us to give, to grant a waiver.
I have it open right now, Justin, if you want me to read the waiver reasons.
Yeah, I'm happy to pull it up. That's really the, the case for the applicant to make, not really um, staff, but just sharing that that's a mechanism if you want to consider it.
Commissioner Foster, if you have those handy, that would be great. Thank you.
Thanks, Baker. So the waiver section of the architectural compo- component, it looks like Justin's bringing him up. I mean, so there's multiple sections in the zoning ordinance, just a um, commissioner's question that. Um, through the zoning ordinance creation, there's certain sections that we think that might allow for a waiver, um, depending, you know, this might, we see. Might see cer- certain flexibilities that we might want to allow for, especially in, um, you know, when it comes to architectural compatibility, there's a little bit more. Um, just to make it, uh, or ambiguous, and yeah, it's getting really late apparently. Some ambiguity um, in terms of reviewing this section and so. It looks like we have five different components in terms of reviewing the waiver for this section. Thanks for bringing those up, Justin. Clearly I can't say them alone. I can't talk.
Through the chair, if I may offer my reading of the compatibility. So in terms of the um, exterior design and appearance to nearby buildings. The adjacent fire station is masonry at the base and has, um, I don't know if it's like some kind of metal. Uh, panelized system that seems really similar to the floating white, um, like shapes, uh, or like light-colored shapes. That the applicant is proposing. Um, I, I think, yeah. I, I don't think it, the fiber cement panel would adversely affect desirability or stability or public health, safety, comfort and welfare. Because the majority of the building is multi, or yeah, multi-unit residential, even though it is mixed-use. Um, and having that comparison to the fire department, I think makes it reasonable for final one, too.
Sorry, this is.
That was Commissioner Bra- that was Commissioner Braga, Commissioner Schalter?
Yeah, and, and, and you can use a secondary material to fifty percent of the upper floors. You, you're not, the, uh, based on the ordinance, you're not, based on the Form B zoning, you're not required to, you can't, it's not like you can't use it. It says that uh, the secondary materials are allowed to compi- compose a maximum fifty percent of the area for the upper floors, which. I mean, it doesn't look like they're that far off from it being a secondary material for those faces. Um, unless I'm misunderstanding something in the plan.
We currently, we currently meet all of the requirements of the fifty percent, the seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent on the base of the building. And then fifty-fifty on the upper floors of the building. I was told that. Um, cement fiber board siding is an acceptable primary and secondary material on the upper floors. As long as you don't, as long as you're not over the fifty percent. I originally wanted to use metal siding, a vertical metal siding. And on another project in Ferndale, I was told I can't do it because it's not considered a primary or secondary material. So I feel like I've completely met the compatibility aspect of this.
Well, I, and I'm saying that I don't think you need to ask for it to be a primary because you, a secondary material is allowed to be fifty percent of the upper floors. If you're allowed to be enough, then that means that the fiber cement is allowed to be a secondary material and you're meeting that fifty percent of the uh, of the area for the upper floors. I don't see why we would, it sounds like you're already, it's already been met as a secondary material. So I don't know why we need to. Uh, why we need to make it a primary material.
Do you have a clarification on that, Justin, or?
I'm just looking right now. I had thought that fiber cement exceeded one of the percentages, um, and I'll just double check right now, but.
Thank you.
I can, the south facade may have a slight issue with it because the south facade, because it, it, when it butts up against a residential, it's. Anything that butts up against a street or a residential zone. So the south facade may be running close, but it looks like. There's a good amount of glazing on that facade that may be, might push it up close to that fifty percent.
Through the chair, as a clarification, um, there's actually C two zoning to the south, even though it's residential building. So I, is there. I, I'm not looking at the ordinance. I just wanted to make that clarification. I don't know if, um, that the ordinance is per, are zoned or the um, existing use.
It says, yeah, an adjacent residential district. So that's, I mean, it's not adjacent residential zone. So it's a little bit gray on how you interpret that.
I would think, um, I think, and what, I, I would typically um. Do in previous cases like that, if it says district, that it would be the actual district, not the um, existing use. So meaning the zone, I think. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that makes sense as well, Michelle. Um, while Justin's looking, um, anything else on the fiber cement or anything else, uh, Commissioner Braga?
Yeah, through the chair, um, I'm looking at the definition section of the ordinance and it defines district as. A portion of the city within which certain uses, buildings and structures are permitted and within which certain regulations and requirements apply under the provisions of this chapter. So it appears that it does mean, uh, it seems synonymous as any district.
Okay, so if it's a C two zone, then that, that, then that uh, requirement doesn't meet the south facade. In my opinion.
I don't know if I understood what you just said, Matt. Um, sorry.
If the south facade, if it's not, it, it says that uh, you have to follow the seventy-five, uh, seventy-five, twenty and fifty-fifty requirements. It's only if it's facing a, uh, it said, um. The following exterior finished material shall be required for walls visible from streets or an adjacent residential district. So since the south facade isn't considered an adjacent residential district per that. Then it does not need to meet the uh, the south facade does not have to meet the fifty, fifty-fifty and fifty-twenty-five rules.
Thanks for that clarification. Justin?
That's what I'm reading as well. So sorry for any confusion. I think I had the um, because it was secondary. I was getting the building base and the uh, upper floor confused. So it appears that it meets it. I apologize for any confusion.
Thank you. Other questions and comments from our planning commission for our city staff or applicant?
Through the chair, I'm in, this is Commissioner Foster. Um, just since that was just brought up, um, I did want to say that. Um, just since that was just brought up, um, I did want to say that. Well, so, kind of in terms of the fence, but I just wanted to say that, um, just for clarification, I mean, so those, um. Residential buildings are in a C two and for any of you who are still on and weren't aware. Um, hopefully that's not a surprise. But your, those residential buildings are located in the C two, which is a commercial district that can potentially be. Developed, um, within the confines of like the CT district rather than like a residential district. Um, and in that, with saying that, um, I think that in terms of the fence, I think that. Knowing that that's going to be C two, I think we should, um. I mean, could be future developed as a C two, just, um, I think I would be comfortable with the applicant and the. Adjacent residential, um, neighbors to kind of maybe potentially work that out how they see fit. Um, in my own opinion, um, I know that's typically how we do these things that, um. That, you know, if maybe like a vinyl fines was sufficient in terms of the neighbor's eyes, then that's potentially what they do. Sometimes I've even seen. You know, side. Financial deals, um, being done in that respect, so, um. In my opinion, I would be comfortable with that being resolved through, um, the developers' discussions in. Um, being brokered through the city, um, with the existing neighbors.
So would you propose the removal of the, of the concrete block wall? Is that what you're?
I would say that I don't necessarily have a preference, it would be, um, I would leave that up to, um, that, those discussions as brokered through the city staff.
Yeah, given how long those homes have been there, I, I. I guess I am more comfortable with the block wall, but I also obviously C two to C two doesn't require a separation, so it's your point.
Yeah, and so I think that, that's especially would put it in the preference of, you know, the residents of what they would prefer. Um, so I would say like leave the block wall unless, you know, the residents, I sometimes residents prefer a vinyl instead of. Or something, so it's kind of up to residents typically of what I've, um, seen. Um, and then I just also wanted to mention, or just clarify that I'm. This might have already been said, but the alley, there's no intention of that being improved, similar to the last discussion we had on Breck and Rich, is that correct?
No, we plan on improving the alley, um, to meet, to meet our same, um. We don't intend on having, you know, a, a horrible alley to, to bring the people into our project, so. Uh, I would assume, um, and I can't talk for my ownership group, but. I, I would think for, for, for that small amount of alley, we would redo that and, and make it. Somewhat part of our development, even though it's not part of our development.
Justin, do you want to?
Yeah, so, uh, um, I guess just to clarify, so, you know, that would go through a city approval process, um. That's happened in other projects as well, where a portion of an alley is repaved and that, and that, um. You know, goes through other city specs, isn't inspected, there's a bond that's put forth, um, that if it's not put to city specs, then. Um, you know, that they don't get the bond back, those sorts of things, uh, but the alley would remain open to the public. Um, the neighbors to the south would still have access, um. Is, was, was that the question? Portion of the question?
Thank you, and then, sorry, third question, um, and final. Uh, I would just think that potentially. Especially if there's improvements upon the alley, that potentially there might be, um. An ability for the city to add signage of, um, you know, no blocking driveways, et cetera. Um, to broaden some of the stacking issues that we've.
Uh, absolutely, absolutely, we can, we can do that. There'll probably be new, no parking signs and stuff like that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, uh, commissioners, uh, questions or comments at this time or emotion?
Councilman Polica.
Thank you, Councilman.
Uh, yeah, I just have one question or clarification, confirmation. Favorite topic is utilities and where they're coming into the building, and I would expect that they would all be coming in. Building and there would be no meters or, uh, utilities coming into the building on the east, west or north side of the, the, the property.
So we actually have developed, um, a, and, and I won't call it enclosed area, but it's screened from. Off a boner or all of our. Meters, gas meters, electric meters, anything to that effect will be on the inside of the building and will be put. So that they're not visible fro- from any, any street.
Okay, so if I'm walking down Bonner and I look over to the building, I'm not going to see a row of meters.
You will not.
Me, or are a bunch of bushes that are trying to hide a bunch of meters. On the side of the building.
You absolutely will not. Um, if Justin could pull up A one oh one, you can, I can. Show you exactly where all the meters are going to go, and they're actually on, um, the inside. You see where the word gas meters is?
Yep.
So it's on the inside face of our wall, um. That will not be, um, and the reason I have that mechanical electrical room. Is I also have the ability to utilize that wall, that block wall, which again is screened from anybody visibly seeing them.
Yep, nope, that's excellent. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Sure.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, any final questions or comments at this time or emotion?
Yeah, Commissioner, um, Showalter, uh, where are you, where are the air conditioning units being placed around the building? Oh, I see them. Okay, nevermind. Okay. Nevermind.
Uh, through the Chair Commissioner Hagforce. Uh, just kind of two quick comments, uh, one towards the applicant, actually primarily the property owner, and the other one's going to be towards the city. Uh, to the applicant and property owner, I understand the. Placement of the door on the outside and the inside of the retail space, um. With the fact that there's no parking on the north side or on the Bonner side. It's very unlikely that someone's going to be entering those spaces, um. So the challenge to the owner is to ensure that the retailer or whoever moves in there keeps those doors unlocked. Um, especially because they're outside of the downtown zone, so they're not required by ordinance to have those doors unlocked and accessible when they're open for business. Um, and we see that with businesses happening all the time where. You have a business that everyone parks in the back and they only use the back as their entrance and then just kind of turn a blind eye to the front. Um, so if you really are trying to have that connectivity with the walkability around the building. Ensuring that those doors remain unlocked, uh, is going to be a big challenge for you guys. Um, and then to the city, um, I really think we need to look at the commercial zoning with regards to pro- parking requirements. Um, I, I know the applicant is meeting the requirements as they are listed, um. I don't think it's going to be enough parking, and a lot of the concern comes from the fact that. The, the zoning requires one spot per unit, and they have quite a few two-bedroom units, and with them being rentals. There's a very good chance it's either going to be couples with two cars or roommates with each their own car, um. And with the fact that there are a lot of roads around there that either. Don't allow for parking because of fire code or no on-street parking on Nine Mile, um. I don't know where those people are going to go, and I, I know that the applicant said that the parking lot is going to kind of be a free-for-all and whatnot. Um, that may ultimately deter your retail, I think, because you won't have a lot of. Conflicts with trying to find parking for the retailers, and so retailers are not going to be able to get a constant stream of customers. Because people are going to try to go there once or twice, and if they can't find parking, they give up going there. Um, so I think we as a city need to look at that zoning requirement and maybe. Look at adjusting the parking requirements or even adding into some kind of a, a. Nuance if possible, when you look at the surrounding roads, if there's not on-street parking, even an option readily available. Then we need to look at possibly bulking up that requirement for a developer.
Thanks, Commissioner Hagforce. Are there questions and comments from commissioners? Or if someone is, uh, wanting to make a motion?
Foster moves to approve in the matter of eleven twenty east Nine Mile, the planning commission approved, um, sorry, said it twice. The site plan based on plans stated received by the planning commission on March ninth, twenty twenty-one with the following findings. Um, as stated in the packet and subject to the following conditions. Um, one, the final engineering, as stated in the packet, two, the tree permit. As stated in packet, and three, um, that the, um. Applicant work with the city and the neighbors to come to a, um. An agreed upon conclusion about the, um, if there will be any amendments to the south lateline, um, wall. Screening wall.
I have a second.
Thank you, that is a motion from Commissioner Foster and a second from Commissioner Braga. Does the commission have discussion on this item?
Yeah, did we talk about, uh, in the findings, I, I, I'm not, I, I must have missed this if it was brought up, but, uh. The finding five in the, uh, in the packet is. Uh, not, not finding five, finding four in the packet about fiber cement is no longer needed.
Commissioner Foster, are you, well, I guess Justin first, are you comfortable with us striking that?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster, are you comfortable with that, with striking finding number four?
Yes, thank you.
And Commissioner Braga?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, so city clerk, um, finding number four is, uh, has been clarified and is no longer relevant.
Thank you, and that makes the previous finding number five, the new finding number four.
Thank you. All right. Anything additional on this? We will have a roll call vote from the clerk when you are ready.
Commissioner Husky.
Yes.
Councilman Polica.
Yes.
Commissioner Schalter.
Yes.
Commissioner Azar.
Yes.
Commissioner Braga.
Yes.
Commissioner Brazen.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Hagforce.
Yes.
And Chair Baker.
Yes, the motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you to the neighbors, to the applicants, um, to our city staff, um. We will move to. Where am I? Okay, yes, thank you very much, um, everyone this evening. Uh, we will move to item number nine. Administrative items, are there any administrative items this evening from our city staff?
None this evening, um, other than just please, uh, share, um. You know, the Ferndale moves plan, the city's been doing some social media posts and stuff like that, um, you know, the more feedback, the better, as we've been. Been saying for about a year now, or I guess nine months now, but started the process in April, so. Um, in any case, yes, uh, that's the only item this evening.
Thank you, um, yep, look forward to seeing that again on April seventh, so even if we didn't have. Um. You know, any other new business, I would want to make sure we do see that on April seventh, even if it's a brief meeting, um, to talk about any updates.
Right now, that's the only agenda item.
Thank you, all right. Um, item number ten, any items from commissioners this evening?
Commissioner Braga.
Commissioner Braga?
Uh, very quick, um, kind of in response to, with the Iron Ridge, uh, project. One neighbor wrote in concerned about property values. I ran a quick kind of informal regression analysis of R one and R two zoned properties within a hundred and fifty feet. Of, uh, properties that Oakland County classifies as high density. And just specifying the regression model with change in property value from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty. Um, as affected by proximity to high-density housing. The model only explained three hundredths of a percent of the variation in property values. Um, hopefully I did the numbers right, but it seems that, uh, it's at least from what's currently in Ferndale. Not a negative impact, so just wanted that to be on the record.
Thanks, Commissioner Braga, um, I found a, an article, um. I've forgotten where it's from, I want to say Boise, but that's where you are, where you are, and that's why I'm thinking Boise, um. I sent it to Justin, um, it was just this week, um, with a slightly longer look back, uh, from a city. Um, in the western US, um, that's been doing, um. Higher density apartment development and that, you know, dealing with that same question about. Um, will it negatively impact property values? Um, quite the opposite was, was what was found, um, in that particular case. Um, so when I sent that to Justin, um, he let me know that you were, um, crunching some, some sort of GIS mapping stuff, so. Thank you, um, you know, so much has changed in terms of, I mean, we've. There's been more development in Ferndale in the last few years than there has been in the last few decades, so. Um, it will be interesting to keep up on those numbers and to rerun things, um, but. The, the model that you used in some of that basis will be helpful. Thank you. Other items from commissioners this evening? All right, thank you, everybody, um. We had a happy Saint Patrick's Day at the beginning, so I'll have a happy Saint Patrick's Day at the end, thank you. Um, with that, we will adjourn at ten fifteen PM. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thanks.
Take care, everyone.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Thank you all, appreciate it.